Okay. This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just ask right now if you would please turn your cellphones to silent if you have not already done so. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este junta regular de Waco ISD esta convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue descargada está disponible para todos. Por favor apájar su teléfono celular y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. As the Board of Trustees, we are held by a Code of Ethics. In one of the Code of Ethics, it says that we will be student-centered focused. So we, as the Board, will be continually guided by what is in the best interest for all students of the district. Moving on to item number two for public comments, is there anyone to stand up? Okay, moving on to item number three, Moment of Silence and Pledge of Allegiance. Let's go ahead and do, I kind of forget, pledge first?
Moment of Silence.
Moment of Silence, I kind of forget which one we do first. Okay, let's just take a moment of silence right now, so please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Thank you. Okay, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance if our pledge leaders would come here to the front.
This month's pledge leaders are Mia Suarez and Rika Rivas of Mountain View Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if the Board would meet me in front of the dais, please.
And we will now recognize this month's pledge leaders. Mia Suarez is a fifth grader whose favorite subjects are math and social studies. She enjoys playing soccer, playing her violin, painting, and reading. When she grows up, she would like to become a lawyer. She is the daughter of Claudia and Will Suarez, Mia Suarez. Rika Rivas is in the second grade at Mountain View, and his favorite subject is math. He likes math because he gets to use food to learn subtraction and addition. He enjoys playing soccer, swimming, being outside, climbing trees, and going on adventures. He also enjoys going to church. He is the son of Denise Johnson and Matt Rivas. And thank you to tonight's amazing pledge leaders. We are now ready to recognize our Texas High School Solo and Ensemble Contest winners. Waco ISD high school students earned top honors at the Texas High School Solo and Ensemble Competition. We recognized our Waco High School students in June who advanced to this contest. We are now honoring our University High students, all of which competed in Class 1 Solos. A high school senior, Sori Enriquez, placed 12th and earned a silver medal. Oliver Houston placed 11th and earned a silver medal. Thomas Vedonia placed 11th and earned a silver medal. Jo Bonnie Lorenzo placed 10th in the state and earned a silver medal. Anna Mendoza placed 9th in the state and earned a gold medal. Mariah Rodriguez also placed 10th earning a gold medal. Aiden Tarver placed 10th in the state earning a gold medal. Mariana Zavala placed 10th earning a silver medal. These students were instructed by teachers Joy Marshall, Clinton Barano, Jimmy Morgat, Congratulations to all of our University High School students. Waco ISD High School Theater Arts students advanced to the International Thespian Festival in Bloomington, Indiana, which offered opportunities for students to attend workshops presented by industry professionals, network with colleges and other students around the world, and the opportunity to compete in the Thespies. In order to compete in a Thespie, students must receive a superior rating at the state level. Waco High School International Thespian Society Troop 2542 had 12 students qualified to advance to the international level, and eight were able to attend. For the first time in the school's history, every single Thespie qualifier from Waco High School was ranked excellent or above, and four pieces were ranked superior. You all can clap, that's a round of applause. We would now like to recognize and congratulate these Waco High School students on their international rankings. Sarah ranked superior in the group acting scene category and excellent in the duet acting scene category. Andrew ranked superior for his solo musical Home from Beauty and the Beast. Eleanor Rhodes. Eleanor ranked superior for her monologues from A Doll's House and Peter and the Starcatcher, and was selected for and served on the UIL Theatrical Design State Honor Crew. Isley ranked excellent for her solo musical Ribbons Down My Back from Hello Dolly, and also placed fourth at the UIL State Theatrical Design Contest in the Costume Design Category. We also want to recognize our Waco High qualifiers who could not be with us tonight. Claire Prather, who ranked superior in the group acting scene and ranked excellent in the duet acting. Lydia Allen, who ranked superior in the duet acting scene category and was a UIL Theatrical Design State qualifier in hair and makeup design, and served on the honor crew as well as the honor crew at the UIL State One Act Play Competition. Also, Vianny Ramos ranked excellent for his solo musical Good Morning Baltimore from Hairspray. And Lily Howell ranked superior in group acting scene and in duet acting scene, and was ranked excellent for scenic design and monologue categories. Lily also placed sixth in the UIL Theatrical Design State Contest in scenic design, and was selected for and served on the UIL State One Act Play Honor Crew. At the International Festival, Lily participated in college audition and interview processes and received callback interview requests from 35 colleges and universities across Also qualified but not able to attend the international competition were Adam Perez, who qualified in solo musical and duet musical, Elijah Contreras in duet musical, and Miriam Goodson in duet acting. These students were instructed by teachers Ashley Elizabeth Vermeulen. Mrs. Vermeulen also served on the UIL Theatrical Design State Honor Crew and the UIL One Act Play Honor Crew. Edward Vermeulen-Weiss also instructed these students in these categories as well as One Act Play. You'll see him being honored a little bit later on tonight as well. Congratulations to our Waco High Thespians. University High School Theater Arts students also competed at the International Thespian Festival category of solo acting. Please congratulate Derek Thomas. Derek received a superior rating in solo acting. Noah received an excellent rating in solo acting. And Jamisha Pringle. Jamisha has a couple of awards she's being honored for tonight. An excellent rating in solo acting at the international contest. Jamisha also placed in the top 12 in the state in the poetry category at the UIL State Oral Interpretation Competition. Congratulations to our University High Thespians. The Waco ISD Fine Arts Department and University High School Theater Arts Department earned distinction status from the Texas Educational Theater Association. This honor is earned by offering advanced classes in theater production, stagecraft, design, and management for students throughout their four years and following a TEAC aligned curriculum. Receiving the award on behalf of Waco ISD Fine Arts Department is Director Larry Carpenter. It was also announced earlier this week that the Waco ISD Fine Arts Department is one of only 16 out of more than 1,200 Texas school districts who have earned the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction for the last six consecutive years, ranking Mr. Carpenter's program in the top 1.3% of all visual art programming in Texas schools. University High School also earned the Texas Educational Theater Association Award of Distinction under the direction of UHS Technical Theater Director Katie Davis, who also serves as a board member of Texas Thespians and is a judge manager for the UIL Theatrical Design Contest. She also serves on the honor crew at the state level. The award is being accepted tonight by Savannah Jones. Congratulations to our amazing Fine Arts Department. This gentleman is no stranger to you, but he's here for a different reason tonight. Please help me congratulate Sergeant Larry Martinez of the Waco ISD Police Department. Sergeant Martinez has been selected for the Waco Chamber of Commerce 40 Under 40 Honor for his measured impact on the community. Life, as many in our community know it now, would not be, would be much different if not for the efforts of Sergeant Martinez. He serves at a time when this country experiences a nationwide police shortage, and he serves with honor and dignity. To all that have encountered him, Sergeant Martinez truly is what the Waco Under 40 Award was created to celebrate. Waco ISD honors local media reporters for their fair and balanced continuous reporting during the 23-24 school year of Waco ISD and public education with the Texas Association of School Boards' Media Honor Roll. Our first honoree tonight is Carl Hoover of the Waco Tribune Herald. Mr. Hoover has covered Waco ISD and public education literally for decades. His in-depth knowledge of how school systems operate in Texas and public education legislation is commendable. He knows the history of Waco ISD and utilizes that information to present a complete picture of the school district. Thank you, Carl Hoover, for your support of Waco ISD and public education. Carl asked me to put that in the mail, I said no. Our next honoree is Ale Cadlebar of KWTX News 10. From climbing on school rooftops to cover our principal dressed as an elf at Christmas time, to in-depth coverage of how the district is using artificial intelligence to ensure school safety, news anchor and reporter Adley Cadlebar provides fair and balanced reporting. Thank you, Adley Cadlebar, for covering Waco ISD and public education. Our next honoree is Bradley Vaughn of KWTX News 10. Mr. Vaughn has also covered Waco ISD for many years and plans ahead, knowing annual events that are occurring and planning his coverage. A one-man show, Brad is a trusted photographer and journalist who provides thorough coverage of Waco ISD, providing valuable information about the district and public schools. Thank you, Bradley Vaughn. Heather Healy of 25 News KXXV. Morning reporter Heather Healy can be counted on to provide a truthful and accurate report of what is happening in Waco ISD. From groundbreakings to building demolitions, Heather knows how to follow a story from beginning to end, to provide not just accurate but truthful reporting. She is also willing to get her hands dirty welding roses with students at Waco ISD's Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, to shoveling dirt at a construction site to bring viewers along on the journey in the many things happening in Waco ISD. Thank you, Heather Healy. Dominique Lay, 25 News KXXV. Multimedia journalist Dominique Lay has done a terrific job this past school year, educating the public on how Waco ISD prepares students for the world of work through its career technical education programs. She has also shown the light on the economic challenges some of our families face and the support provided by the district to ensure that students are successful in all aspects of their lives. Dominique has also put a spotlight on our Hispanic students, featuring their achievements and the support provided by Waco ISD for our Spanish-speaking families. Thank you, Dominique Lay. And you'll also see up on your screen Earl Soudemire from KWKT Fox 44, another amazing journalist that has heavily covered public education and Waco ISD, and we got him promoted to San Antonio. So, we will mail him his award, but thank you also to Earl. And we would now like to recognize our community partner for the month of July. Our community partner is AVI. AVI is our community partner for its continued support of STEM education of the district's elementary students by donating and installing STEM labs at both West Avenue and Crestview Elementary Schools. He not only, you can go ahead, that's definitely a round of applause, please clap. They also supply many of our schools with school supplies, and this year they are providing thousands of dollars of supplies for our Family Fest scheduled on August 3rd. Receiving the award, the Texas Association of School Board Stand Up for Public Education Award is Mr. Kenny Evans, and thank you to AVI for their incredible support of our students. And that's all we have.
Okay, always my favorite time is seeing all the kiddos and all the awards, and surprised they didn't stay for the budget presentation.
I just wonder why.
Moving on, we're going to move on to item number five, Superintendent's Report.
All right. I just want to mention Family Fest this evening. We, we're four weeks away from the start of school, believe it or not, and Family Fest is coming up in two weeks, on Saturday, August 3rd, from 9:00 to 12:00. As you know, that's a huge tradition in Waco ISD for back to school. And once again, that will be at University High School this year, and that will be a single stop for the district-wide Family Fest. And then next year, when the new Waco High School opens, we'll have two places. But this year, it's at University again, and we're just looking forward to greeting our students. Our students will receive a voucher for a free clear backpack with school supplies if they attend, and we are once again partnering with the Waco McLennan County Public Health District to provide all school-required immunizations, and we want to thank them for helping with that, helping with that. So look forward to seeing you all in two weeks, on August 3rd, 9:00 to noon, at University High School, and we'll have our principals and staff members there to greet our kids.
Right, always a fun time, and free school supplies.
Free school supplies.
Come get it, August 3rd. Okay, moving on to item number six. Mr. Grant, do you have any discussion? Mr. Davis, is there any discussion? Mr. Vedonia, any discussion?
No.
Mr. Gillery, any discussion?
No.
Or questions, I should say. Mr. Ochoa?
No.
And Mr. Patton, any questions?
No.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, item number seven. Mr. Grant, is there anything you would like pulled? Mr. Davis, anything you'd like pulled?
No.
Mr. Vedonia, anything you'd like pulled? Mr. Gillery, is there anything you'd like pulled?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, anything you would like pulled? And Mr. Patton, is there anything you'd like pulled?
No, ma'am.
Okay, hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
I move.
Okay, to accept consent agenda as presented, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. I'll just go ahead and take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding allowance expenditure authorization number 44 for materials cost escalation for Waco High School construction, Mrs. Barretta.
Actually, it's number 47, maybe wrong.
Good evening. Did I not say 47? Sorry, number 47.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Cancana, members of the Board of Trustees. Can you believe Waco High School's been under construction for over two years? Yeah. So, it's a long project. We have about 10 months left on the building, and then the rest of it will take about another 16 months from now, so before we're finished with all of this site work and everything. So, we're, we're really making good progress, but we've still got a ways to go. This project, because it was so long, we were concerned at the initial kickoff that contractors would put too much cushion in on their numbers, and then it would be harder for us to make our budget. So we established this escalation allowance that we could use as needed, and they have to very carefully show us exactly where they were impacted and how they were impacted and how much. And so what this, this agenda item for you tonight is to allow us to use the escalation allowance that we have in the project, doesn't increase the contract cost, and it does not increase the contract time, and it was something that we planned ahead for, so.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve allowance expenditure authorization number 47 for costs associated with escalation in materials, pricing, asphalt, masonry materials, and authorize superintendent to execute the AEA.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, do I have a second?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any questions or discussion, Mr. Vedonia?
No.
Any questions or discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any questions or discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any questions or discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, I will, we can take a vote, I would not entertain a motion, we've already gotten that, so let's go ahead and take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. And Mrs. Barretta, it looks like you've And Mrs. Barretta, it looks like you've also got the expenditure authorization for number 48.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Do you want to kind of explain us what that one is? Is that the?
Demolition.
Demolition of Waco High.
Yeah, this one is for the demolition at Waco High School of the existing building. Similar to the escalation, when we were pricing the demolition two years ago, it was coming in considerably higher than we wanted. There were a lot of things that were pushing on the market at that time to increase costs, so, excuse me, we established an allowance for that so that, we all choked up about demolition.
Choked up.
We established an allowance so that a later time we could, the contractor could bid the job and find out what a really a better value number was, so that's where we are today. So, this was also included in the contract amount and will not increase the contract amount or the contract time.
Okay.
I have one question ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Patton.
These variances, that's simply due to inflation, correct?
The, on 47, yes, on AEA 47, yes.
Because we did this in 22, right? And so just over the time period.
Yes.
Sorry to hit the mic.
Yes.
Over the time period, things have gone.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Yes, on the demolition, yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Mr. Grant, is there any discussion, any further discussion, questions? Mr. Davis, any further discussion or questions?
No.
Mr. Vedania, any further questions, questions, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, any further discussion or questions? And Mr. Patton, any further discussion or questions?
No ma'am.
Okay, so I will, we will take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, the approval allowance expenditure authorization AEA number 48 for the demolition of existing facility and authorize superintendent to execute the AEA. Hopefully. Okay. Number, item number 10, the thing we have all been waiting for, review and discuss budget update, Ms. Davis.
Okay, so we are getting towards the end of this budget process. This year has not been a very nice one at all. But we have made headway, we're not anywhere where we need to be, but you know, we have made some headway. So let's look through this a little bit and see kind of where we're at. I'm still working. I don't have a lot of magic that was mentioned the other night, but we're still working on this. Okay, so we're going to look again a little bit at our enrollment, average daily attendance, how it's ended up, and then look at where we think we're going to end up, our general fund for 2023, 24, and then as required under the law, we're going to look at our local property values and then talk maybe about what our projected tax rates are, and then take a preliminary look at this 2024, 2025 general fund. Then we'll look again at the budget calendar, see what's left in the process. So, looking at our enrollment and our average daily attendance, we talked about, I'm not going to spend much time on this because we've talked about this, these numbers kind of come from what we looked at before, our enrollment, our trend in enrollment over those years is, we've lost about 9.8% of our total enrollment, and then our attendance was, has fallen at a greater rate, although it did come up a little bit this year, which was good news, but it had fallen at about 13.1%. Of concern however, I think is this right here, these are enrollment trends by grade span, and so you can see here that our pre-K is down about 15.1%. Our elementary schools are down, which one is elementary here? 8.9%. Middle schools are down 10.9%, and high schools are down 7.4%. I actually initially, right after COVID, it looked like we had lost a lot more in high school, but as that has tapered off, you can see, and as I said, this is of concern because you see more loss at elementary now than you do at high school, and middle school's still pretty high too. So I think that is, the fact that we're not getting the pre-K kids that we once were, and then that's feeding up into elementary, would indicate, you know, future lack of future growth, let's put it that way, and probably additional loss. So we will, you know, we keep the demographer on looking at this every year, and so we continue to look at that as well. You can see the chart at the bottom is our cohort survival rate. It is not the lowest it's ever been, it's only the second lowest it's ever been, and this is our cohort, this is from kindergarten, which is required, because pre-K is just for eligible kids, but from kindergarten through 12th grade. The only other year it was lower than this was 2001, 2, it was a 47.8% survival rate, it's now 48.3%, so that is, like I said, about the second lowest it's ever been, and you can see it's always run more in the 60% range over the last 10 years or so, so that is a significant drop for us as well. All these things will impact, you know, future budget projections because our revenues are so much based on our enrollment and ADA. Yes, yes, because I'm just basically taking what 12 years ago, or the kindergartners would, and then what it is as of this year, so for those years.
Sure, I have a question too.
Mr. Ochoa?
Just if anybody can remember that back that far, what did we attribute that to in 2001, 2002?
Is that a hurricane?
That decline.
I know, I was just curious.
I just didn't, I didn't know if anyone did.
I mean, it was obviously a big drop.
And you see that the year before is only 54.7, so it was kind of low. I do think, and Dr. Kinkana could probably speak to this as well, even though she wasn't in Waco at that time, I wasn't either, but I do think there have been over the last 20 years, much more of a push to keep, because accountability changed as well, and keeping kids in school and having them graduate, that became more a part of the accountability system than it probably was back in 2001, 2. And I would say that's probably.
I didn't know if that was isolated to just Waco ISD, or kind of like what we're going through now where it's across the board.
It would be something that we could probably look at.
Just curious.
Sorry. Okay, so now, this is what we're looking at now for our enrollment and average daily attendance, still being a little more optimistic maybe than I should be, I just can't quite get there to a 300 student loss again for next year, but I did go a little bit worse than I have in the last few years. I was pretty good, we did better this year, but, so I'm, right now I'm projecting a loss of 223 students in enrollment, and then a loss in ADA of 171. As I said, our ADA percentage wise did come up this year from what it has been the last few years, so we did gain some dollars because of that increase in ADA, and it was very close to what I had been projecting for ADA as well. And the actual final ADA per PIM submission was about 58 students less than the ADA that I used for budget purposes, better than the 150 or 200 it has been in the last couple of years, but still a little bit lower than what we had expected, although we made up for most of that revenue because our special programs numbers are up, as is across the state. I think that is a big driver right now in districts across the state, across the nation, is increases in special. So, looking a little bit at what that, the general fund's going to look like, right now, we are going to, we did, in the original budget, we expected a deficit about, we expected $4.6 million deficit in our fund balance, or change in our fund balance for the original budget. We amended in some projects that were not finished at the end of last year, some vehicles that hadn't been received, we have amended in some increases in police, I think I talked about this in another slide, but we amended in some additional funds, and to bring that change in the fund balance to $8.3 million. Projected at this, actual at this time would be a loss of about 1, about 2 million, just under 2 million, $1.9 million. A lot of that is because we are still going to have some big carryover amounts. We received at the end of last year in August, we received about half a million, it's been in the financial statements, about half a million for some roofing repairs, and part of what we amended in during the year was the deductible on that, so that is sitting there at a million dollars. We have not done those roofing repairs yet, and that's going to carry over into next year's budget. So part of what you see here as under expenditure is a project like that. We have vehicles ordered for the police department, we have buses ordered, and so a lot of those things may not be coming in by August 31st, and those will carry over into next year. We don't fund everything that doesn't come in, but if people request it and they're big ticket items, we will actually rebudget those in the next year. So it looks like right now we would end up with a fund balance of a little over 56 million, that is a 34.8% fund balance, still healthy going into next year. This is what our general fund revenues look like and where we had variances. You know, I just feel like we finally get enrollment to start stabilizing where we can project that, and these property taxes and state revenues just went crazy with a late action by the legislature for, on the property tax laws last summer, and none, you know, in defense of our tax office, nobody could get that programmed into their systems and get all of those calculations done timely for certified values and for us saying tax rates last year. So as a result, our, on our property tax collections, we have had levy adjustments of $5.4 million in the current year, we've never had levy adjustments of that size, and then 1.7 million in, for the prior year adjustments, because that law included retroactive adjustments for frozen homesteads. And so that is a total increase of about 7.1, 7.1 million dollars that we've had in our levy alone. So that is very significant for this district now, and the general fund is not so horrible because when our, as we've talked about, when local revenues go down, state revenues go up, especially when they're related to property tax, taxes and values. So we will pick up most of this, not all of it, because we did have some loss in enrollment, we'll pick up most of this in our state funding, where it does have more of an impact will be in our debt service fund, because you don't have that direct offset in state revenues when your local revenues go down. So we will be looking at that because there will be some, we will draw down the debt service fund balance somewhat. You know what, that happened because we had a, not a big, we don't really carry a big fund balance in our debt service, but it's healthy enough for bond issues and things like that, so that we do want to look at a little more closely when we set the tax rate. So the other thing is on our earnings and investments, those were up tremendously this past year, as you can see. I budgeted 2.7 million based on the prior year, and we're, we look like we're getting about 4.7 million this year, so huge increase. But again, we've talked about it, that the feds keep saying they're going to start lowering interest rates, and sometimes when they start lowering those rates, the bottom just falls out, and it, we can, we can eliminate this investment income in a hurry. So that's, I budgeted about 2.7 again for next year with a loss, because they say they're going to lower them, but you know, that's really hard to project at this point. On our state revenue, as I said, we have picked up some revenue there because of those losses in the property values, and then we've had some gains with our special education and some of our other program funds, as well as we got the teacher incentive allotment, a big increase there in the current year. We got about $1,003,000 last year, we're getting about 2 million, 2.1 million this year, so that was a gain in our state revenue. And then TRS on behalf, that is calculated off of what our salaries are, so that's always very close, very close to what we budgeted, it looks like. On the federal revenue, our indirect cost recovery, we've picked up about $690,000. Again, the reason this is up as high as it is, is because of spending ESR funds, we get indirect cost off of the ESR funds. Now, we will get a little bit of money off ESR funds in next year because we have, are running the salaries that we had moved to ESR, like for dyslexia specialists, librarians, some of those, we're going to run them all the way through September 30th, so they will go partially into next year, but we're using every dollar that we can of those ESR funds to help offset those costs of the general fund. So we'll have some, a little bit of money indirect cost from that next year.
And then we absorb, I'm sorry sir, and then we absorb that back, right? The salaries, we're going to pay through September 30th and then whatever.
We had, as we talked about.
It's going to come out of the next year's budget.
We have about 3.8 million, which was part of that 15, 14, 15 million we're talking about deficit, we were pulling in 3.8 million from ESR that we wanted to keep in salaries.
Okay.
And we'll look at that and see kind of where we're at with that. And then, as we've talked about a lot, that Medicaid reimbursement that we lost so much money on this year, I have heard some, we've heard a couple of different things that contradict each other. First, we heard that the percentage was going to be up a little bit next year from what it ended up being this year, but now the feds have come back in and they have put out a new proposal, so I haven't had a chance to see what that would be, frankly, I don't really know. The charges really complicate, so it's hard to tell what that impact is until you actually file reports with them, but I think that we may not really pick up very much on that at all. So then on our general fund expenditures, as we talked, as I mentioned before, we amended in some significant amounts from fund balance, that was that difference between the original budget and the final budget. Purchase orders that we carried over, about .3 million, we had maintenance projects in progress of about .4 million in classroom furniture that hadn't come in of about a .1. We had the committed funds for bus replacement that we had been saving, as we sold buses over the years, we were putting that money into this committed fund, that was 1.3 million. We spent it. I mean, they haven't come in yet, but we spent that whole 1.3 million on new buses for this year, so that will be, won't be rolling forward, that won't be in our fund balance for this coming year. We had some small amount to meet comparability of .1 million, and then we had some budget amendment for required security of .2 million. Most of what I have had to move into this contracted services and security for that roll call, the substitute officers, has come from salary savings, but we did move that .2 million in, and then we had to fund some compensatory services for special education. We had insurance recovery, received that, and this is what I just talked about a minute ago, we rolled forward the half million that we received from TASB, and then another half million for the deductible, so that was a million dollars that we budgeted for these roofing projects. And then for the transportation transition costs, that was about half million to get salaries started and supplies and buy the equipment from Gold Star to get our mechanic shop started. Then the teacher incentive allotment was amended in at 2.2 million, and then I have amended in the funds for the new instructional facilities allotment that I applied for week before last, they have already told us that that will be prorated, there's not enough funds for us to get the $1,000 per student, but. There's not enough funds for us to get the thousand dollars per student, but we will get some portion of that. This year, when what we got for Carver was about ninety-six percent of the thousand dollars, so it was still significant. Didn't get as much as we had originally applied for because the enrollment was down at Carver, but we did get ninety-six percent of that.
I have a question, please. You, you've said we have committed funds for bus replacement, and this may be a Dr. Edison question. Have we already purchased new buses? And specifically, did we purchase the small sixteen passenger that we had talked about?
We did. Sherri is probably the most-
Three microbuses and five special ed buses?
Yeah, okay, there you go.
And those have already been purchased.
And microbuses.
And those have already been purchased, right?
They're not, the-
But we paid for them.
Microbuses had, what, a two, almost two-year delivery schedule?
Mm-hmm, they take a long time.
Wow.
We thought the, the special ed buses might be in, still might be in by the end of the year, but those microbuses, I think, was eighteen months, two years, something like that. There was a really long delivery time on those.
But we've already committed the funds for that.
Already ordered them.
Okay.
They're encumbered.
Thank you, ma'am.
Encumbered, thank you.
Yeah, so then looking at our fund balance right now, our fund balance for twenty, this is the unassigned fund balance. Before, when I said that the fund balance was going to be about thirty-four percent, that was the total fund balance. This is unassigned fund balance, and it will be down at, make it the glasses down, okay, good, twenty-nine, seven, four, because things that come out, as I said down below, things that come out-
It's fund balance.
Total fund balance will be inventories because you can't spend them.
It's a balance.
So that's about three hundred and sixteen thousand last year. We had two point three million restricted for transformation Waco. How much of that is left? We're going to use, we know about six hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the wraparound services. And then we had funds committed for construction capital equipment of five point seven million last year. It will not be that high this year because we don't have, we really didn't put a lot of money or have projects going on this year for construction projects. And some of that, we will have some outstanding purchase orders, though, as I said, these buses will be an outstanding purchase order and some of these other things, so could be up to that five point six million, but we won't have any projects. Anyway, so that would bring our unassigned fund balance down to about four, forty-nine million dollars. So, so the end of this year, we're still there. Okay, so, property values. We have to talk about property values because this is a required discussion under the law. The actual reason for this discussion is no longer valid because we used to have to talk to you about this because there was a lag of one year between when you, what you, what your property values were and what you used for your summary of finances. But we still, it's still in the law, so we still have to talk about it. So we have to have this discussion within a hundred and twenty days of adopting the budget, and the current year state certified property values are used in the formulas, so we're using current year now instead of prior year to calculate our state foundation school program. Problem with that is then we have to estimate what that number was. Before, when it was back one year, we knew exactly what the comptroller had, had certified for us. Now we have to estimate that number. So it's just one more estimate that we have to add into what we're doing. The differences in the values are primarily related to local exemptions, like the Freeport exemption, these vehicles pollution control and solar energy deductions, as well as the TIF. And so we do have a TIF, and that does make a difference between what we use for local values and what you use for state values. Now, we have, let me see, do I have something more that I'm going to discuss about this before we get there? Let me talk a little bit about what the TIF is, because this will be our last year that we are in a TIF. We have been in three TIF zone, or tax increment refinancing zones. TIF number two ended two years ago. Last year, TIF number one ended. Next year, we'll be in TIF number three through this coming year, and after that, we will be out of the TIF. So these are zones that are created, and the property taxes from the taxing entities go into a tax increment fund. And that money is used, it's been, a lot of the development right now in TIF number three is out on Elm Street, and that's why TIF number three has gone up as much as it has, but it's used for the infrastructure to help support the new construction in those zones. They, you know, they did create a new zone for the Baylor Stadium, but we are not allowed under the law to participate in any new TIF zones. After nineteen ninety-eight, we can't participate in a new zone, or we can't participate in an expansion of a zone. So once we get out of this one, without losing our hold harmless, because with the law changed, the state held us harmless for the taxes that we lost that we sent to the TIF. And so we have been receiving money from the state for that, those taxes that we pass on to the tax increment fund. But if we had gone into one after nineteen ninety-eight or participated in expanded one, we would not have had that hold harmless revenue from, under the foundation school program. So we have been receiving that, and so we have been held harmless. This year, we have a big problem. We, well, we, I went through this for almost two years because our TIF values were reported incorrectly and that we had a disagreement between the comptroller's office and our local tax, or city tax office on when TIF number one ended. So we finally got that resolved, I think, in January of this year, that's two years old. Now, they reported, this year, they reported TIF number three incorrectly. Supposedly, I got something that the tax office reported about three billion in that zone. It turns out it should have been six. I was told they reported the prior year's values. It's not the prior year's values, so I'm not quite sure, but we have filed an appeal again on that TIF number three. Hopefully, I don't know if it's going to get, I, this next week, part of my job will be to talk to TEA and the comptroller's office and see if I can get them to incorporate that into our comptroller's values, because it makes a big difference in our state, in our tax rate. That's what I'm mostly concerned about because this could compress our tax rate lower than it would otherwise be compressed. And once your tax rate gets compressed, you can't bring it above that. So it's a real concern that we get this corrected with TEA and with the comptroller's office. So right now, our estimated twenty twenty-four T-two value, which is the main value that affects your state funding, is nine point three billion dollars. This next chart just shows you a little bit what our property values have done over the last few years. We did not have as significant an increase in this, in our preliminary values this year, but I think it's because those preliminary values get compared to your certified values last year. Our certified values were overstated because of, you know, we've had this huge adjustment in values, so they were overstated. So I think when you look at it, had it been correct last year, it's a bigger percentage than what it initially will look like. But this shows what our tax rates have been through twenty twenty-three. Our current rate in total is a dollar two eight five nine with a seven point, point seven six six four MNO rate and a twenty-six point two one nine INS rate. So this kind of shows what has happened with those values, and you can see that this increase here at our collections, and this is our tax collections as a percent of the current year's original levy. So when it gets quoted to me, and we're going to look at that in a minute, what they've told us my collections is, and what we had to base this budget and tax rate on back in August, we've only collected ninety-one point eight percent of that. That is so much lower than we've ever collected before. We're always collecting right at a hundred percent, ninety-seven, last year was ninety-seven point nine, but this is much lower when you look at what we had to adopt on. Now, the tax office is saying we're, we're not collecting that, we're collecting ninety-seven percent because they're comparing it to what it is now, but not what we had to set our tax rate on. This slide will show you where we are with, because we, it shows these huge adjustments that we've had this year. The last time we had any kind of adjustments like that was in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, but these adjustments have been significant, and both charts kind of show you the, the way that looks compared to prior years. So, for our two thousand twenty-four property values, the foundation school program estimates, our total current and delinquent tax collections for MNO were sixty-three point one million, for INS were twenty-one point six million. So our total collections were eighty-seven, eighty-four point seven million, and our current MNO and tax, INS taxes levy were eighty-six point eight. We have paid a hundred and five thousand dollars into that TIF number three, and we had tax refunds of fifty-six thousand dollars under this specific code. So our net MNO collections is sixty-three million for the summary of finances. That's where they get that ninety-seven percent rate, because that number that they're showing is levied is not what we thought was going to be levied in August. Are, what they do, we have to hit a hundred percent, our year two, last year, it was a hundred and three percent. We were forced to lower our debt service rate last year because we had collected excess taxes the year before. So they, we had to lower our rate, that's even taking a bigger hit on our fund balance for debt service, and then we lost these collections for this year. And guess what? You don't get to adopt a higher rate next year because you had lower collections. Well, you do a little bit, but not, not a one-to-one. And the year before, it was ninety-eight percent. So right now, they're seeing our anticipated collection rate for our purposes as a hundred percent. And then this is our, again, this is our calculation of the excess collections. We don't have excess collections this year because of those losses. So, these are our values. Again, as I said, our preliminary values are nine point eight billion dollars. Looking at prior as best I can, because the pattern was not very good this last couple of years, because we keep adjusting, because we, you know, two years ago, we go from twenty-five thousand homestead exemption to forty thousand exemption. We had that for a year, then we go to a hundred thousand, so those have, the certified values get adjusted with that. But I would project, based on the prior patterns, that that would be nine point three billion dollars, which is a value adjustment of four hundred and seventy-nine million. The percent change from the preliminary, that's right, about five percent, as you can say, the last couple of years, it's been more around nine percent. And then the change from the prior year is one point four nine, but that's from the prior year certified, not from what it actually has ended up being. And then the homestead exemption, you can see it went from the twenty-five to forty to a hundred thousand dollars. And I don't think it's going to get changed now between now and for this coming year. But I, I don't know what might happen in legislative session for next year. So, tax rate, this is the preliminary calculation of our tax rate with the compression of what it would have to, current compression, and again, we don't have certified values yet, they'll come out next week, and so we'll know better what our certified values are next week and what that compression might be. And also, this chief of, the comptroller's certified value, the twenty twenty-four, that is one of, is the number that I'm going to be arguing with because of the TIF. But what this would do, as they bring our, compress our tax rate, it would bring our state, our MCR, you kind of see towards the bottom of the page, MCR, the Leicester, the state, or local limited under law, it would bring it from that point seven seven six that we were talking about earlier, that's our current tax, MNO tax rate, down to sixty-two point eight one cents. So that's a significant decrease also in our tax rate, and, you know, helps out our taxpayers. Then we get to, we add our golden pennies of eight cents and our voter-approved copper pennies of five cents, and we have a total MNO tax rate of seven six six four. Total INS rate right now is, is point two seven four. That did go up a little bit over what we had last year, which was about twenty-six cents just because of the, the value adjustments. So our tax rate would be right at a dollar four. A dollar four that we had a few years back was our MNO rate. So, so our, this is the comparison on the next page of what that looks like. It was one oh two eight, so it's going up just over a cent, one point one cents. The, it's still lower than what we were talking about during the bond election, because we have had significant property value increases, and so that what we had said during the bond election, that for this year, it would be about thirty-two cents. So we're about five cents under what we had promoted for the bond election. Now, let's talk a little bit about the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I've been living with now for a few months, all of us have been living with for a few months. So here's the revenue challenges. Continuing enrollment and ADA drop. The comptroller's property values are currently misstated due to that TIF number three. Our interest rates are scheduled to decrease. Timing and level of decreases is not really known at this time. Really expected it to start happening before now, but inflation has not come to the point that they are ready to drop rates. We have the loss in the foundation school program revenue for that eighteen eighty-two partnership that was about a million three. That is really, that's really neutral, budget neutral, because we, the additional positions and all that they had in the zone being cut as well, offset that loss in revenue. We lost the indirect, we'll lose that indirect cost revenue generated by the federal stimulus funds, and then we have, still have that loss in Medicaid funding that was in our original budget this year, we won't have for next year. So our challenges that we talked about, kind of in that work we did in January, February for that five-year projection, absorbing the positions that were previously funded by the stimulus fund, as I said, that was about three point eight million dollars that we wanted to try to pick up in positions. Then we have unavoidable rate increases, utilities, property, insurance, various things that we just kind of have to do. And then our current year budget shortfalls, health benefits, to do something about our, whether we go with TRS or we stay with our self-insured fund, we will have probably significant increase in our cost of health insurance. We also know that we were short substitute costs last year and a few other things in the budget. And then we have the transition for transportation into being managed by the district. Right now, that's running about with the employee, the cost of staff, which is about three million, and then the cuts in the contracted services, it's running at about a two million dollar increase in the budget. Our mandated programs increase, particularly special ed and our safety. Special ed does come, pretty much funds our increases, the increase in revenue there. Not, if we, we're only required to spend fifty-five percent of the increase in revenue, we spend a hundred percent of special ed revenue on special ed program, but it will pretty much fund the increase in costs, unlike the safety allotment, which didn't, you know, maybe funded half of what we ended up having to, maybe actually a third at this point of what we ended up having to do. So that one is way short of funding the program. And then we, the other concern I still have in the budget right now is lack of funding in some specific areas and going through, I haven't started scrubbing yet, but these areas, just after our first cuts- yet, but these areas, just after our first cuts, are maintenance, technology, vehicle replacements. Oh, okay, so I, why didn't I put the police down there? But they're up there under safety and special ed. So, those are the areas. Again, special ed, safety, maintenance, technology, and vehicle replacements are just major repair-type projects that we haven't done for a number of years. So, those are, to me, a concern that I have of what we have in the budget right now. And obviously, a concern of a couple of other people, because I just pulled down the additional request list I hadn't looked at until now, and it's $802,000. So, and it's mostly in those areas I just talked about. So, on our general fund revenues, this is what it looks like for next year. Local property tax collections, hopefully, will be up. We shouldn't have those kinds of adjustments again. Earnings on investments, down a couple of million dollars. Other local revenue will be down about half a million, mostly insurance. And then, our intermediate source revenue, that's actually up, not down. That's the money that we're still, that will be the last payment, I think, next year for that land swap for Paul Tyson. We'll get that next year. State foundation school program revenue, down about 5.1 million. Again, that's kind of offset by that increase in our local property tax collections. TRS on behalf, the TRS rates are going up, so it would normally, if staffing stayed the same, TRS would have been up, but since we cut so much in staffing, that revenue goes down, but that revenue is offset by expenditures. Exactly. So, whatever we spend, we earn. So, that is going down on the expenditure side as well. And then, our indirect cost recoveries, as I said, down about $1,001,000 with those funds, and then, Medicaid programs, down from what we originally budgeted, but only down about $33,000 from what we think we're going to be at the end of this year. And then, our other federal program revenue, not very much, ROTC reimbursements and a few things like that should stay about the same. So, our total revenue is down about $5.4 million. On our expenditure side, the issues that we have, this is a slide from our previous presentation with just some annotations here. So, our salary and benefit increases, and that's $14 million, $15 million. We had $2.2 million worth of salary and benefit increases. We didn't do those. We have teachers moving up about a 1% increase on the teacher's schedule, which is costing the general fund about, right at half a million dollars. We've had some stipend increases of $61,000. We have the TRS increase of $551,000. And then, I've put $1.8 million into the health insurance.
May I ask a question, please?
Mr. Pat.
I know that our health insurance is a concern district-wide. It had been mentioned, I don't know, months ago, that we, that there is a possibility of looking at the state. Yes, ma'am. The state plan. Would that, one, would it offer more, if we were, because I understand you can only do that once a year, like, the end of the year, December or something. If we were to go with that, would that create more opportunities for choice among teachers? And would it also save the district money if we were to switch plans?
I'll let you address the money. The, there are multiple plans. I'm actually pretty familiar with the state plan and used it in my prior district, but there are more options for employees to choose from.
They've eliminated a couple.
They've eliminated a couple, but there's still, there's still more plans. So, if you have a particular health issue, you could pick a different plan.
That's more customized to your needs.
That fits your needs, right.
It's not customized at all for your needs.
Well, I mean, it fits.
Oh, for the individual.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
The, the problem is that, you know, TRS plans are what they are, and so, you pick one of those that's available.
Right, the state establishes those, but you go into a larger pool, and so, there are more options than what we typically could offer.
And that would also be a cost-effective means?
That's a terrible question.
Right now, what our consultants have given us, it's about break even between the two. The problem is, it's really hard to know where TRS is going to land, because all, when we got ESER funds, the state also got ESER funds. The state used a big portion of their ESER funds to bail out TRS. And so, TRS has been keeping their rates lower because of getting the ESER funds. And so, their ESER funds are ending too. We don't really know what the impact is going to be. Now, what we'll have to do, we have to give notice in December, because their plan year starts September 1, and so, we would give notice in December that we are going to go onto their plan year. So, we get a partial year then, and they will quote us different rate. They'll estimate our rates based on our experience. They won't necessarily be the rates that are published for Region 12 area. So, we'll get rates established for us, and then, we have, whatever decision we make at that point, if it looks good, we have to commit to five years with TRS care, active care. So, that's, you know, we're going to, supposed to have a presentation, I think, in September.
We've been planning to bring you a presentation on that, so we can share more information about it.
So, we'll see that presentation before you leave and before we hire a new suit?
Yes. September.
See that in September.
Okay. I know everyone's insurance is going sky-high and looking to your packet and looking at all the, our building insurances and stuff, but I know that for our employees, you know, personal insurance is a huge burden to bear, that's a necessity. I remember that one of our former HR people, a few years ago, said Waco ISD uses our insurance, like, uses insurance like no other school district in the area, that we really use it. And I think that if we're looking at break-even kind of situations, which kind of sounds like it might be a possibility outside of the impact of VESR on the state, that we, we give that some thought and some look at. So, I look forward to that September presentation.
You know, we've had some, in the financials this month, there's some good news in our own health fund, because we did make some changes to it this, we went back with United Healthcare. That's been an improvement. And we have had, we went with CVS's prescription drugs rather than Express Scripts.
Right.
That has been a significant improvement, because we received our first quarter of rebates from CVS. They were over $600,000.
Yeah, I saw that in your packet.
And getting $300,000 and something from Express Scripts. So, that's a big improvement with that. We've talked about some other plan design changes. One of the things that we do, that TRS does not allow, and most plans don't allow, and I have felt a little bit like Daniel this past few weeks, because I seem to be the target of weight-loss drugs. We, we fund them. We fund them, and so, I'm, the recommendation is we quit funding them, and I had a staff member in my office for a long time last night telling me what a difference it made in her life, and that it's no more discretionary than maternity. Okay? So, and I really didn't know what to say to that. Anyway, so, yeah, like I said, I felt a little bit like Daniel, getting, having to talk to all the people about their jobs over the last few weeks, with people talking to me about.
Health insurance is important.
Weight-loss drugs. So, you know, it's something we do, and it was half a million dollars of our spend last year, and it would cut a half a million dollars out of our budget for this coming year. But do we want to fund that, or do we not want to fund that? I'm going to talk to our consultant about, maybe could we raise the deductible or raise the copay on that type of drug, instead of just doing away with them? I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Now, it wouldn't cost us as much now under CVS, because we get a bigger rebate. But still. Not sure, that was half a million of our increases. So, that was why I was recommending that we don't cover those anymore. Anyway, so, other things, the unavoidable rate increases, we talked about. I had projected in January to be about $1,067,000, I think, or no, $1,089,000, and it's about $1,067,000 right now. That includes half a million in utilities and a 38% increase in our property and liability insurance. Actually, liability didn't really go up too much, other than we had to pick up the buses, because we were not paying the auto liability for our buses. Gold Star was paying that before, so that is a, I'm not sure how much that increase was, about, I think I was projecting about $80,000. I think it was just slightly under that. Transportation, transition to in-house, actually, the consultant projected $80,000, just under that. The transportation, that has increased in cost right now, it's right at $1.9 million. I had, I thought it was going to be about a million. Poor Ricky's had me yelling at him now for about four months every time he comes into my office, but it's about $1,009,000. Our wraparound services for Transformation Waco, that's sitting at $671,000. And then, our current year budget shortfall, better, a little bit better than what we thought, $329,000. We were projecting $441,000. So, the other thing we do need to consider, and part of why I have an increase in here for our health insurance, because we didn't increase health insurance rates. We did not do any increase for health insurance rates last year. We left it the same, and we're trying to absorb that, and so, that's why we're kind of running down our fund balance. The problem with that, I'm thinking that right now, maybe a $600,000 deficit, better than what we were talking about at one time, but to cover a deficit in the fund balance, guess who has to pick up the tab on that? General fund by itself. General fund, regular ed, can't pick it up with special ed or any, but if we increase the rate, the contribution rate, then all funds, including food service, who has BUCU money, you know, all funds have to pick up their share of it. But right now, because we didn't increase the contribution, we're just going to have to cover a deficit, and the general fund picks that up. So, I want to be sure that if we have an increase, we do it as a contribution, because I want everybody picking up their fair share of that increase.
Cheryl, if we don't do that, how much is it? If we don't do an increase, what is it coming out of our general fund? $600,000?
$600,000 for the current year, but then, we, I don't know what next year, next year, we're going to have to do something, some way. We'll have to raise rates to cover that, what we need, because we've wiped out the fund balance in the health fund. There won't be any money left there, so we have to cover that. And if we go, even if we go with TRS, I think the rates will be such, because, and we'll look at that when the consultant comes, because he's got some tables that he's showing of what those calculations look like, because part of what you lose, you lose stop, stop-loss coverage, you lose the rebates, you lose those things that are helping to keep our plan down, and you just pay premiums. That, in some, that is a safer way to do it. You are then victim to whatever race they want to set, but it's safer, because you don't have to cover any huge losses. Now, if we have just some that have huge losses, like we had that million and a half dollars in January, except we got most of that back in stop-loss coverage, because that being a one-time or one claim, you get the stop-loss. Now, if you had a million and a half dollar spread over a million and a half, you know, over all your employees, then you don't get stop-loss coverage necessarily, because, you know, you don't hit that 150, or what's their stop-loss coverage? 175? 175, 150, 175. So, you know, that, that's a plus if you have a few people hitting that, but it's more of a gamble. Being self-insured is much more of a gamble. And we'll be able, and you can budget easier when you know, just premiums, you know, with TRS, and this is what the premium is going to be, and that's what we're going to pay. Okay. So, right now, looking at our ending position, as I said, we've made some progress in January. We were saying that we had a beginning fund balance, 58 million. The projected deficit for the current year was about 3.7. That's going to be more about 1.9. So, our beginning fund balance is a little bit better than we had been saying, and I was saying 54.3 at that point, looks like it's going to be 56.1. And then, our estimated revenue, though, has gone down with, not very much, just a little bit in kind of trade-off between that local and the state revenues, but it's still right about, it's about $2 million loss on that, from 156.5 to 154.5. Our base budget is that same, I'm starting with the budget that we had, 161.8 million. And then, at that point, we had proposed appropriations increases of 9.4 million. Right now, they're $1,004,000 with all the cuts that we've made, where instead of us having to increase that budget 9.4, it's right now, $1,004,000. We're not done. It's $1,004,000 right now. So, we went from that net change in fund balance from 14.6 million to 8.1, and then, we've also cut Guama Guaca a little bit, and the day school for the deaf, because that was the 618,000 I was estimating to transfer to those programs, is only right now about 535,000. So, we've saved a little bit of money there. So, that 15.3 million deficit is 8.7. Now, I have $800,000 worth of additional requests. Maintenance needs money, special ed needs money, technology needs some money, and what was the other one I said? I said maintenance just now. Safety, safety is the other one. So, I've got to put some money in there, and it's probably, that 800,000 is mostly in those areas, has to be done, but I think that's maybe a little, on the low side. I haven't finished scrubbing. So, go back through this again and do my magic at the end and start scrubbing these budgets and looking at what people have in there that looks like they couldn't spend. I told somebody, I was going to, I had, my staff has been keeping a spreadsheet where people have not followed district procedures when they're doing something, and on their P-cards. And I said, I'm going to take that spreadsheet, and I'm going to say, oh, they went out to lunch at this restaurant, that wasn't approved vendor, $165 for their staff? That's coming out of your next year's budget, and I'm just going to start cutting like that to make sure we get this down, but I probably won't do that. For years. It's okay, I haven't had any for years until they want something. But right now, we're looking at from 23.8 to about a 29%. It'll go down a little bit after we put in these additional requests. It's not good, but it's probably better than.
It's not as bad as what you originally had told us, yeah.
Probably a little bit better. I told Dr. King Canada I wanted to bring it down 5 million when we started this. We've brought this down seven, almost seven, so it's better than what we thought it was going to be. Might be closer to the 5 million when we finish, but we have, it is what it is. And you, we're going to have a hard year next year, too, unless we get some additional funding.
Legislative session is going to be really important.
Voting is going to be really important.
Okay. I'll see you in a few weeks.
Mr. Gillery?
Yes.
Going back all the way to the first slide, and talked about the pre-K enrollment and also the continued decline in enrollment. Have we did a deeper dive into why we're not getting those, those families and students? And have we compared those numbers to other districts to see if that's a trend of some sort or anything like that?
Yeah, we, we've looked at lever codes consistently. I'm looking for Denise, but I know she's here, since the pandemic. Since the pandemic, really, trying to understand where kids are going, whether it's to private schools, or out of state, or out of, out of the district, and it's been a mixed bag everywhere. And you see urban-type districts all across the state have lost enrollment since the pandemic, and so that's, that's been a pattern across the state, not so much in other kinds of districts, but in districts similar to ours, enrollment is down as well as attendance. And there's, of course, nationally, you see lots of stories about chronic absenteeism. So we've worked really hard to try to get that, that daily, average daily attendance up, still not where we want it to be, but it's still, you know, we're still, we're still pushing on that.
Is that due to, have we looked at families moving to, out of, like suburbs and out of the city, or is it housing? Is it anything like that? Have we looked at any of those things?
No, I couldn't speak to what kind of housing, you know, if it's cost of housing, or that, I wouldn't know.
Lack of housing is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, lack of housing.
And he also talked about, I think you looked at birth rates or something at one time, and.
Our demographer looks at birth rates when they're projecting, and we know those birth rates are down, so you're, you know, and actually, he showed that to us the last time he presented. So there's some of that, but, you know, it's, it's, it's been difficult.
Do we have a way of know, I mean, do we know if pre-K and Kinder and whatnot is, are those drops possibly due to homeschooling?
Oh, absolutely, some of it could be that. Charter schools, yes. But it's, but it's all, it's kind of all over the map, so it's been difficult.
So it's hard to pinpoint.
It's been very difficult to pinpoint.
But my question is, at the end, how do we pull the information to know why we're not getting the enrollment that we're looking for?
Yeah, the, the system that we have, we have lever, they're called lever codes, and so when kids leave the system, they're coded as moving out of state, Denise, I'm looking for Denise, as moving to a private school, and parents, parents can tell you, they report what they're doing, whether they're going to a private school, homeschool. There's a tracking system through the state where kids, if they move from one school district to the other, so you can tell those things, but you can't tell if it's because of lack of housing or, or housing costs. Those are things that we, we can't see.
But you can't tell lever codes if they've never enrolled in school?
We cannot, if they haven't been in school.
So if they've never enrolled in pre-K or Kinder, then our lever codes won't, won't tell us that info?
And pre-K is not required. I mean, we offer it for eligible students, but it's not required grade. So more parents are, I think, staying at home, working remotely, too, and probably not sending their kids to school, kind of homeschooling pre-K, because you don't see as much of a drop in Kinder and first grade and all. So I think that pre-K, you probably end up with people changing lifestyles.
That's why you see, that's been a big push for the junior league here in Waco, helping to get pre-K in school. It's hard to get pre-K, sometimes hard to get pre-K. A lot of moms would like, like keeping them at home with them. We need them in school. We need those four-year-olds in our classrooms.
That's also why Mother's Day out programs are like really blossoming, because people are working remote and keeping their kids, but then wanting to.
So, so on that, the kindergarten number, if we're not seeing a drop, or a continued drop in there?
I can split that one out, I can split that one out, more by grade level, too. I just put the all together, but I'll look at that, what the kindergarten is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and we can review, we'll have the demographer once we get our enrollment for the fall and our PMS data. By the end of October, we'll have the demographer do another look and show us birth rates again, and trends and patterns, so you'll get that again in the fall.
Mr. Ochoa.
Interesting.
That makes sense. Mr. Ochoa, yes?
Anybody can answer this. We haven't heard much about it, but obviously, other districts are having the same budget issues we are. Have we spoken to other districts about their long-term plans for continued participation in Guama and Guaca?
About continued participation?
I'm just thinking, if they're cutting budgets, too.
That's a really good question. I know Cheryl has some predictions of how many students for, for Guaca and Guama, but I, as I told some people this last week, you, the smaller districts are impacted, right? And so you pay, when you, your student enrollment pays for teachers. In a small school district, you have a limited number of electives, and you, if you send students away to another district and send your money away, you don't have that money to pay for your own staffing, and so that makes it very challenging for them. So I think that will be, continue to be a problem for us, and I, you know, I hear, you know, the desire to grow those, to grow those populations by adding kids from other districts. I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think it will ever happen. Because, because you're going to keep your money in your district if you're a small school district. You have limited, you have limited funds.
The same program.
Say it again.
A lot of the districts have opened up the same program.
And some districts have opened up some of the same programs that we have, but even, even for the ones that we don't, they're, you know, they're going to try to enroll students in the classes that they offer so they can pay for their teachers, even if they're not the same courses.
Or out, maybe ten percent.
Yeah, most of the students are ours. I don't know the, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but most of the kids are ours.
Closer to ten.
Ten to fifteen-ish. They're our kids, predominantly. And there are some districts that participate a little, little more than others, but again, it's a challenge for the smaller districts.
Guama's had more, I think, consistent participation than the other districts than Guaca has.
And that, and that'll fluctuate, too, based on superintendent changes in those districts and their philosophy and interests and knowledge of budget, but, but those are, you know, to me, they're Waco ISD programs. They're for our kids. And I, you know, long-term, I'll, I'll tell anyone, those programs should serve Waco ISD kids, and I, you know, I have some firm beliefs about, you know, how we serve them, and, and what we could do in the future to increase enrollment in those programs, and serve even more of our own kids, and give them even more opportunities at the home campus.
I was going to say, the home campus.
Yeah, because you, you have kids that would participate in some of those programs, but they're not going to leave the home campus because they want that high school experience. They want to be in football, or they want to be in fine arts, and they don't want to be away for a half a day and give that up. So I, you know, and I, and you never know, right? You, you never know who that, that student is that, that, that is going to be attracted to that kind of program if they experience it. And if you never experience it, you just don't know. And I, I believe kids need to try things on in high school, and there's a, we often, and that's what I love about public schools, and the large comprehensive high school, is you get to try a lot of things on and see what fits, and see where your passions are and what you like. And, and I'll stand by that. Yep.
I had a question.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Just wanted to know, what are the efforts that are being taken right now to increase that pre-kindergarten enrollment? What, what are we doing? I heard about the junior league, but I was just wondering, what are we doing as Waco ISD to get those kids enrolled in pre-K?
Yeah, but no, we get a little, we get a little more than half-day funding. We've had our pre-K roundup in the spring. We, you know, we offer registration at all of our campuses for pre-K, and then we do get that boost in support from the junior league. Beyond that, I don't know that we have anything else going.
Any other questions? Mr. Grant, do you have any other questions? Okay, Ms. Davis, thank you so much.
August eight. Yes, we did add the meeting for the, the budget on August eighth. That's a required meeting, so you may have seen a calendar invite for that.
Okay, here we go, moving on to item number eleven, review discuss college career, military readiness, and high school graduation rates. Ms. Bell?
I want to thank Cheryl, because usually I'm the most complicated presentation. I prep myself for that, but then I was all lost in numbers. Okay, what I'm going to present to you today is our career, college, and military readiness statistics. These are not finalized from TEA. The graduation rates are, so I'll share with you what the grades are looking like, but we are still in the corrective space. TEA allows us to look at the CCMR, and if there's something there that, that the kid should have had, they allow some corrections. So we've had, for example, a couple of kids who, their AP score was not in the file TEA had, and this is the class of twenty-three. So they allow us this last-minute correction window, and then they send us the finals. But using their list, I was able to give us some statistics. So I'm going to start with graduation. The graduation rate is like the theory of class of, okay? So it's students beginning in a Texas public school, they get attached to what's called a cohort, so they are put into that class of, and they are calculated by the end of the four years. So it really depends on where a kid drops in for how long they have to graduate. So for example, I gave you a couple of examples. Joseph enters Waco High in August twenty-twenty-one as a freshman, so he's a ninth grader, and their cohort is going to be twenty-twenty-five. That's the expectation, is they graduate within four years. But Andrea comes from Oklahoma as a junior, so she drops in as an eleventh grader, she's expected to graduate in twenty-twenty-three. So that grade level is something we're real careful about, because when the student drops in there, they have only so many years where they're expected to graduate. But we talked a little bit about this. Students leave for documented reasons. So if they move out of state, if they go homeschool, if they go to private school, we get documentation from them because, and we pursue that really hard, because that takes them out of the calculation. They're not a dropout if they go off to any of those settings. So we make sure we have the documentation for the codes, so that those students are not calculating as dropouts for us. And any kid who goes to another Texas public school is labeled as a mover, and that is why this lags a year behind. So every October, TEA cleans it up. So if Denise was in, I began the senior year at university, and in the middle of the year, I left, and I ended my graduation year at Waco High. I'm not universities, I'm Waco Highs, but it takes a year of submissions for TEA to move me into that. And so you can imagine, across districts, Dallas to Waco, kids get moved around. I can say, one of the things I wrote down for myself is that approximately for the high school, approximately eighty percent of our non-grads, our kids labeled as dropouts, are no-shows. So they're kids that we cannot find in between the two years, and believe me, we do a lot of chasing to find out. And if we find that parent, and they say, I'm going to homeschool my kid, we bring them the documentation for, to get them correctly coded. We don't want to leave them as a no-show, but I think that's kind of a good trend for us, that we know that at the high school, at least eighty percent of them are no-shows between year to year. And a lot of that still continues to be financial for our students, even after COVID. You know, they get out there, they, they work, and it's really hard to come away from that for some of our students. Our graduation rate has been steadily going up. So the graduation, the state eased some graduation requirements for the class of twenty-twenty. Those were testing requirements and attendance requirements were eased, but I'm really proud to say that our high schools have continued the momentum. So when things went back to normal for the class of twenty-twenty-one, we continued to, continued climbing from where we were from the class of twenty-eighteen. So this led to some really good numbers when I was looking at our five-year pattern. Ten point nine percent are Hispanic students. The graduation rate has gone up ten point nine percentage points in the last five years. For our African-American students, it's seven point two percentage. But a couple more numbers for you. Our special education graduation rate has gone up eleven point seven percentage points. Our emergent bilingual has gone up to, has gone up nine point one percent, and they're actually at ninety-one percent, our emergent bilingual graduation rate. And our homeless students are up fourteen point eight percentage points.
Can you slow it down a little bit, because Carl's writing all this down? We want to make sure that.
Those are headlines, yes, yes. Okay, so special education, graduation rates have gone up eleven point seven percent. Emergent bilingual has gone up nine point one percentage points, and the emergent bilingual graduation rate is at ninety-one point nine percent. And that's students who are currently emergent bilingual, and students who've been exited from the emergent bilingual program. They are also monitored for five years and included in that number. And our homeless students, we have one of the, we have a higher rate of homeless students than the state, but our homeless percentage, it went fourteen point eight percentage points. It went from fifty-nine percent to seventy-three point eight. So we're really making a lot of gains. Those populations, their percents move a little bit faster than when you look at every kid, because of the sheer amount of numbers, but I. Yeah, there's still amazing numbers across the board, and we're still up across the board, and we always want to do better, but I think that this all shows that the effort that we've put in, we've taken some hits, but we've been keeping students in, and they've been graduating within that four, these are four-year graduation rates. Whereas when I came back to the district, we were heavy on the five and six years. Students were taking longer to finish, and so that really bodes well for us to be able to serve the kids who might need the five and six-year graduation rates. Okay, so Brazos High School's graduation rate was a little different. Not called a graduation rate, it's called a completion rate. So because of the nature of being a dropout recovery school, when we talk about Brazos's completion rate, it includes the students who are graduates, no matter what cohort they were in, students who are continuered, meaning that they enroll by the next school year and start attending by the next school year. They're counted as graduates because, again, they're a dropout recovery school, keeping a student. They get credit for GEDs, but I want to make a very clear piece here, is that over the last five years, Waco ISD has had students leave, and we have had zero students for all the high schools get GEDs. The state, the state sends me back that data, because when you get your GED, or your high school equivalency, as it's now called, you do that with the state. You're going on record with the state, you pass that test. They report those back to us, so you can, you would be able to see the name for the student or the number, and in the five years, the number is zero. Zero students have received their high school equivalency going across the last five cohorts from twenty-eighteen. So that's why we try to tell students that that, that series of tests was raised, the rigor was raised on those considerably, and so we try to do everything we can in programs like Brazos. And then in twenty-twenty-three, they were, started to get credit for former dropouts who graduated, regardless of their past bonus, as bonus points.
Can you clarify what you're saying about students getting their GEDs one more time? Just break that down.
So for students who receive their GED, when a student goes, it's considered a dropout for us as a district if a student pursues the GED. But when a student receives, or an adult or anybody receives their GED, that's reported by that program as having passed those tests, and therefore, the diploma is reported to the state. So the state would send us back this list of students, and if Denise Bell earned her GED, when I, and I was the class of twenty-twenty-three, when the district gets my file, it will say Denise Bell, and it will say GED. It will, it will say that I've earned it. So the state tells us who those kids are, and in the last five years, there's not been one. There's not been one. Right, correct, for the last five cohorts. So they could be, have gotten it after their cohort, moved out of the numbers we're looking at for the four, five, and six, but no, it's been zeros for us. So that's why Brazos works really hard, and the campuses work really hard when a parent's like, we're just going to do a GED. We really try to say to them, you know, if they're close, we try to make a plan with them, because we, because we don't see the success rate. So we don't want to just say, hey, go do that, without thinking about it.
Sorry, Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Clarification, so what you were saying is because in the last five years, no kid has gotten their GED, in the last five years, every kid has graduated with a high school diploma?
No.
What are you saying in that?
What I'm saying is, when, that kid would be a dropout for us. And so if one of our dropouts, because they're in the cohort, the last public school that they reported on is the one that gets held accountable for them. So if Denise drops out, I'm still on that cohort list. I'm still on the list, and if you don't find me and put the right code on me, or I don't go to another Texas public school, I calculate as a dropout for you. But that includes students who leave us to pursue a GED, and it includes students who receive a GED.
So you are saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you are saying kids are not leaving Brazos just to go get a GED?
No, not at all.
So if they're, if they're gone, they just kind of drop off, and you can't know what to find?
And if a parent is insistent on that choice, we really can't take away a parent's right to say, no, my child's going to go do their GED. "No, my child's going to go do their GED." I just like to point out when I can that we don't see it. If we had like 20 kids, I would see it because there would be dropouts for us, and we would see their name, and the state tells us if they've earned a high school diploma. So it seems to me the trend is probably, the reason we're not seeing it, the trend is probably that that's a young adult who's outside of the four-year, five-year, and six-year rates. Right? So if Denise goes back and it's, I'm eight years out of high school, I'm not saying nobody gets their GED, but those three years, we're not seeing it.
And is that just for Brazos, or is that you're saying?
The whole district, the entire district.
I have a question.
Yes.
Tied into that, with us absorbing Brazos, will, back to the high school campuses, will there still be that delineation from the state accountability for those kids who are in that program? Or will it show for University or Waco High? Or will it show that they are in that alternative, different setting for the classroom?
They will be attributed back to University and Waco High, except for those students who end the year at Brazos and do not return to us. And they will be part of Brazos. Brazos will still have a four, five, and six-year graduation rate moving forward clerically, but, because they're part of the district's data. But they will, those students will be attributed to University and to Waco High School.
Okay.
And there's very few, I did put down the numbers. There's only 13 kids who did not finish at Brazos. And so we, Ms. Lachlan has made a careful plan and talked with all those parents and students about what they will receive at the home campus.
Mr. Gray?
And so what I'm thinking you might be experiencing is that people are getting those GEDs when they're beyond six years. And when they're, when they're cohort four years and five years and six years, but they also may be coming from other districts and other campuses. So I just know that on our reports, it's a zero for our high schools.
So once they're outside of that?
They're older, once they hit a certain age, they're no longer in our data.
They're not counted by the state.
I would just love us to, to double-check that one again. I do, yeah, that was, that's a.
Okay, okay. So if students did leave Brazos and go and get their GED, they would have been given a credit for them as a graduate, but that's not an area they got. And Brazos got a lot of bonus points this year from students who were dropouts and returned. So if a student's reported as a dropout and comes back, and they were at Brazos, they were getting credit for them as graduates. Okay? So Brazos's completion rates feel a little strange because you can see they start to turn into 100. But it's because if a student, so this is looking at these cohorts across time, but if someone came back and they were a 2020 and they dropped out, they were getting, they were getting credit for them in the numerator, but not in the denominator. So theoretically, everybody saw this with their dropout recovery. It's like 103% graduation rate, 104%, but they cap it at 100. So, yeah, so it's, it's really looking at it that way. But you can see, I made a note for you that in 2012 to 2020, Brazos served middle school grades. So that's why there was a bit more students there. And then they come, came back down to nine to 12. And again, only 13 students ended the year at Brazos, and of those students, nine of them are the cohort 2025. So there's plenty of time for them. There's not overage students that you might think who cannot return back to the high schools. Those students were completed and graduated this year. So I think Brazos had a very large group this year because we didn't send anybody new, but the students wanted to finish out there. Graduation rates and accountability for the class of 2023. So for domain one, the first section, they take the best number of the four-year, five-year, or six-year rate. Brazos gets that bonus. But in domain three, which is the federal rating, it's only 10% of the whole piece, of the whole domain, and it is 10%. And it is just the four-year with more restrictions. So the state allows us to count some kids, and they get excluded. The best example I can give of this are students who stay for special education beyond the four years. For the state calculation, those students are removed from the calculation because surely by their needs, they will stay, they are entitled to stay beyond four years. But when we look at the federal graduation rate, those students are included back in. So they count as dropouts, but they're not really. But that's how it's calculated in the federal methodology. In domain three, yes, sir. And the graduation rate is only reviewed for four subgroups, and it's a point system. So at some point, I'll re-present accountability when it comes out this year, if it does. But methodology-wise, you can see the districts is informational only. Remember, the district's rating is no longer the district data. The district's rating is a weighted average of the campuses. So line up all the domain ones, and whoever has the most students gets a cert, gets a higher proportion. But you can see that the districts is going up. You can see University and Waco High, their six-year rate is still their best rate, but even though six years started lower when they were four-year rates, if that makes sense. So we're getting students to continue and complete, and Brazos is 100%. You can see the state pulls down, when it makes a letter grade, it pulls down these rates considerably. So University's 94.9% six-year graduation rate will be rated as a C, and Waco High's 90.6 is a D. So they pull it down considerably for graduation rate and how that is scaled. Brazos gets a different system, so Brazos will be 100%. They'll be an A in this particular area. Comparing the graduation rates, University's four-year rate is equal to what it was the year before for the class of 2022, when they were a four-year rate. And Waco High's has gone up 3%. So we're seeing that increase in that four-year rate again. But for domain three, I just gave you the all populations because they'll be rated in different subgroups. But you can see that what it does is it goes across, it looks at that four-year rate. Everybody's target is 90. You can see that they've not reached that yet in the four-year rate. And so then it goes to minimum growth expected. Minimum growth is 0.1% increase in graduation rate. So for University, they were expected to get an 86.7, but they got that 85.5. So they did not meet minimum growth, whereas Waco High was expected to be an 81.5, and they exceeded that and met that growth. Brazos's four-year rate is the reason that we've had discussions about the program and the campus because that is what has had them as comprehensive in domain three for federal accountability for some time. So then we go to CCMR. CCMR is using a set of criteria that's determined by TEA. So TEA says that they get the feedback from stakeholders at the state level for what a kid should be able to do to be ready for post-secondary success. So this is the criteria. There's college readiness, and I'm going to go through each piece. There's career readiness, and we have seen the return of military readiness. So we did have a few students for the class of 2023. We had to submit their DD4 form as having gone to the military. But interestingly, all those students who were, who had that form were all already CCMR in some way. So that's kind of a really good boost for us, that they already had either industry certs or they had dual credit or had done well on college testing. But change is coming. We are heavy on IBCs. We're very successful at that, and in a minute, I'm going to tell you that we just continue to get stronger in our CTE. So students are actually earning even more, but the state is tightening up the rules. This is part of what happens last year, is that for each class, they're going to raise the stakes connecting CTE class credit with industry-based certifications. So for the class of 2022, they only had to earn the industry cert. For the class of 2023, only the industry cert. I know that you see the phrase "sunsetting" on there. Those are industry certs that were removed from the acceptable list. We did not do any of those. So we did not get any, some other districts took a hit in having too many kids have one of those industry certs. We didn't even do those certs. We were doing the ones connected with the classes. But this class of 2024 that just graduated, they not only have to earn it, they have to have at least one course credit from that program of study. And the class of 25, which is this year's seniors, have to earn the industry cert and be what's called a concentrator, which means they have to have two or more credits in at least two classes. So now we're kind of streamlining students and staying into that. Starting with the class of 2026, they have to earn the certification and be what's called a completer, which is four credits, at least three courses. So it's very prescriptive what the state wants us to do for students. So if a student moves from one CTE endorsement to the other, even if they earn that industry cert, we could lose credit for that because they have to have a certain amount of credits for that piece.
Explain that a little bit better to me, I'm sorry. So an industry cert, give me an example, and then give me an example of a class that they would have to take to, to go with it.
The certification, one of the more common ones, because I don't, I see the names of them, but I don't understand half of them, right? But the CNA, right, the nursing, the Certified Nursing Assistant is the certification. TEA has now connected a set of classes for everybody to follow, which, it has a menu, so we have some choices. But the student, the class of 2026, it's not going to be enough for them to be certified. They're going to have to have taken at least three classes in that CTE for at least four credits. And the senior capstone CTEs are always worth two credits.
So when you're saying classes, are you, like, if you're, if we're talking about CNA, does that mean like a class to go with it is like biology?
That would be Principles of Health Science, then they go into medical terminology.
So classes that tie into that certification?
We are prescribed those classes. We are told what those class options are. And so we checked our choices from the program of study because that also affects our funding. Students have to stay in a program of study for us to get funding. We don't just code them anymore. We get it auto-coded, meaning it's almost retroactive. They look at how many kids earned, and that's where funding's coming from.
Could you take these, I'm sorry. Could you take these? So for the CNA course, you could take the CNA course without having to get in Principles of Health Science and medical terminology before?
Yeah, or you could, might not have passed one of those classes. Like you had a struggle when you did medical terminology, but you passed anatomy, and then you take the CNA in the, I think it's one of the medical classes, I'm not recalling off the top of my head, the CTE class that preps you. You could earn it, but you might have lost the credits in some way, or you might have joined Guaca a little bit later. Like you figured out, hey, I'd really like to do nursing. We allow kids to just go, be able to go into those programs. We don't say you can't do like auto mechanics because you've never been in it. We have a lot of kids who go into that, the auto-tech classes in the third and fourth year because they switch up and change their minds. And that's what Dr. Kinkan was talking about. The kids get to make some choices. This, this way of doing CTE really is the state kind of aligning and keeping kids locked in to one. So it's potentially something that we'll have to see, but we're going to monitor the classes to see what the kids do. Because we, Dr. Kinkan has always been an advocate of if a kid goes into auto mechanics because they thought they loved it, and by their junior year, they're like, "I hate this." And we say to them, "But you have to do it because we need you to earn this cert." Like, that's just locking them into what's technically an elective. We'd rather them pivot, and some of them go into education, let's say, and get an educational aid. We'd rather, as they mature in high school, we would almost rather them be able to pivot for employability, for better opportunities for themselves and their families. But it could potentially have an effect. So we have to monitor each of these classes in their own way because we have to accept that we might not get credit for some kids who got the industry cert in their senior year only.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, it's just really doing a disservice to our students. One thing we used to say is that if a kid is in, say, a nursing program, we would rather them realize they don't like the sight of blood as a freshman in high school than two years into college.
Yes.
Do we, do we get extra credit if a kid can pass more than one certification, even though it's not in the same career path?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. But, I mean, I agree with you because I told my own kid, explore high school for free, right? Because if you hate it, like, kids might think they want to go. We had a huge increase in the auto-tech certifications this year. A kid might think that they want to do that for a living, but then they start to do it, and it's not what they thought. We allow them to pivot. We just have to monitor what that's going to do to our CCMR. But I wouldn't recommend pigeonholing children for the sake of accountability. I would never say that. But we just have to see what the kids do. We have to see what pathways they take and the options that are there available for them.
It could impact the percentage of students that are getting the CCMR credit via a, an industry-based certification. So we need to monitor that carefully and make sure that the others are getting beefed up, right? So if we lose them over here, we catch them in another spot to get that credit.
I'm wondering if we do more, if we should do more prep work. I know we go in and speak to the junior highs about what career path they're going to choose to really give them a full picture of what, what's involved so we can avoid some of that.
Yeah, our counseling department has done a great, a great way of doing like a high school fair. So the seventh and eighth graders, they talk to other students. It's not talking to the, the auto-tech teacher. It's talking to students who are in auto-tech at the high school now. And that's kind of made a difference for our seventh and eighth graders because they can browse that fair, and they can see all the opportunities we as Waco ISD offer our kids for the things that they can do.
Are any of the classes that they would need to take, I guess, prerequisites? Are they offered like in the summer? So if I'm like, I was maybe in like Future Educators Path, and I decided, you know, I really don't like being around students, and maybe I want to go to automotive. Is there a class that maybe I can take over the summer to where I could be on track in the automotive path? Or is that not available?
Typically, we don't have to do that. Usually our summer school's a lot of credit recovery, but the counselors will sort of double up where possible, right? They will say, "Okay, you do want to switch. Let's, how about I give you auto-tech, which is two class periods, and then auto-mechanics, the basics, like, is a class, it's one class." So the, the beauty of our kids having eight class periods is that there's room for that, right? Because they only need 26 credits for an enhanced diploma, but we give them eight classes over four years. There's 32 opportunities for them to switch and pivot. So the counselor in that case, instead of the kid doing summer school, they would kind of double up here because they're coming out of something else.
Got you.
Yeah.
One more question. But with that limit, so if I was in band and I was in that same exact situation, would I have to choose band or my industry-based certification at that point?
If you failed classes, there might be a choice to make. That's really where we, the only place we see a push-pull like that is if students have lost credit earlier. But with the more targeted credit recovery program, we're going to start to give you credit recovery for the freshmen and the sophomores so that there's room for them to switch when they get older.
And I mean more not if I failed the class, but more if I just decided to go a different career path. So if I seen blood, and I said, "No, and I want to be a teacher now, I passed all the classes that were the prereqs with CNA, but I'm also in band now to go to the Future Educators Academy, am I going to have to take band off of my schedule to do those classes? Or is it room in my schedule?"
There's room in your schedule, yeah. Really, the only time we see push for a sacrifice for something like a fine arts program or athletics is really when the student's been losing credits early on, and they have to be put into things that recover those credits. But we've really not seen a lot of push-pull. It's just going to be if they change mid-year, they get the industry cert. This class of 26, which is our juniors this year, like, if they do choose to change and they pass the industry cert, like, they go into auto-mechanics in their senior year, and they pass a certification, we're not going to get CCMR credit for them, so we'd have to make a plan for something else. If we're going to let kids pivot, we have to have a bigger plan for them.
We also kept the eight-period day when we went to the block schedule. And we had to, we had to remember, remember, we had to increase those minutes for CTE. And the only way to do that was with the modified block schedule that we're implementing this fall. Otherwise, kids would have lost the opportunity to take some things.
Okay, so I give you this number. This year, 800, we had students earn 837 industry-based certifications, and that's up from, it's up 302. So the CTE department has really worked with the teachers, and it is, I can tell you, across the board. It isn't just an increase at Guaca, Guam, and P-Tech. It was the auto-tech, it was entrepreneurship. There's some certification they do there. There's a security, if students who go through our law and public safety, there's a security certification they can get. There's educational aid, just across the board. Tax prep, so I guess I'm going to call some of these kids to do my taxes, right? Because they're graduating with higher. We see that at university, so we see them taking that with them. So the kids have really come so far. And that's not all the seniors. The kids can earn it in their junior year and then say, "I want to continue with that" because there's internship opportunities, like the bank at university, or if they're in P-Tech going and working in classes. So just because they earn the cert doesn't mean they don't get to move forward. But really, that 830... But really, that eight hundred and thirty seven was so impressive to me that in one year, we increased three hundred and two. And even last year, when it was in the five hundreds, that was an increase of two hundred. So we really are getting our kids to pass these certifications and go out, to me, that's post secondary ready. Whether they took the classes or not, Denise Bell's opinion is that they are ready because the earning power of that can be very big for our students. Okay. Have them advocate for no need to do all these CTE. Okay, so how does CCMR factor into accountability? It is forty percent of domain one, so it is a heavier hitter than um graduation rate. And in domain two B, it's half of it, that graduation rate doesn't even factor into that one. And in domain three, it's uh thirty percent. So you can see that CCMR is more heavily weighted in accountability than graduation rate is. So it's not enough for us to increase the number of students graduating within four years or five or six. It's really what are they able to do or what are they prepared to do um when they leave us? So what I did was I broke down the factors for you, the percent of kids who did these things. And I gave you the class of twenty two and the class of twenty three, so you can see the increases. So yes, that SAT one is very real, we went from the class of twenty twenty two, twen- nine percent of students scoring college ready on the SAT. To twenty one percent of our kids scoring that. And then for math, you can see there's still some work to do in math, but um, Dr. Kinkan and I were in a meeting and a CCMR specialist said to us. I'm seeing more kids who can do dual credit math because they're passing the T S I two earlier in their math career. And so they're able to take like the math classes that they need for their associates as dual credit. So really, the eighteen to twenty four is our first good move, the A C T, we don't administer schoolwide. So that's if kids go do that themselves, we do the SAT and you could see that's on the move. But we've also had kids do the college prep class so that we can at least prepare them for the ability to pass T S I two when they go to um MCC or T S T C or something like that. So these numbers are going up. For dual credit, we're seeing an increase again. AP exams, the associate's degree will always stay around that number because it's a very small number of students who finish their associates while in high school. We have a lot of kids who maybe don't finish all that they need and go off to um finish at MCC. The industry based certs is about the same, military enlistment is at three percent. The special ed one, I wanted to give you some perspective on because a special education advanced degree is a student who graduates with an endorsement. That's only five percent of the whole class, but that's fifty one percent of the special education kids in that cohort. So when you look at that fifty one percent and that thirty percent, you get a real sense that the stu- that eighty one percent of the special education students in the graduates. Are deemed CCMR, career, college and military ready. Five hundred and twenty three is another number I'm giving you, and that's the number of students in the past three years who earned at least three hours. Which is one class of dual credit math or English, or nine hours in other subjects. And the nine hours in other subjects can be CTE, the way Gu- Guam does it, so they do the welding dual credit and they do some other pieces dual credit. So that's three classes, in layman's terms, it's one class of math or English or three classes in other subject areas. So five hundred and twenty three kids moving forward in that one year. And again, this is nine through twelve, right? So ninth graders don't really do much dual credit, but it's just showing you over the past three years, how many kids we've had who've earned dual credit while in high school with us. And so I didn't put the numbers in the slide since they're not finalized, but I can give you our projections. So current projection for the district is uh sixty one percent of our students overall are CCMR ready in some way, and that's up five percent. Sixty nine percent of university high school students are CCMR ready, and that is up nine percent. For university, that will be scaled to a C grade, it will be a seventy three and it will be a C. If we had kept the way that the accountability was before, it would have been an A, it would have been a ninety two. Mm hmm, and remember, the commissioner made that change to accountability when these children were juniors. So there's not a lot of pivot room for us, we'd have to grow over time. Waco High has sixty one percent CCMR, which is down five percent, that would, that will be a D for them, but it's a sixty eight, it's close to that seventy. But that two would have been an A, it would have been a ninety. And then Brazos has twenty five percent, which is up fifteen percent, and that's a C for them. But that would have been, you guessed it, an A, and the district sixty one, if we saw the district rating of data, would have been an A. So we would have been As across the board. The, you set goals for House Bill three for CCMR, and the one we had set for this year to achieve was sixty three percent. So as a district, we have sixty one percent, so we're close to that goal. But again, when you set those goals, it was when we looked at what did the state consider exceptional? We set the bar for us to be getting an A because that's considered exceptional. Okay, and how are we working on it is just these few ways, cohort system tracking, which is relationships. CTE has really worked hard on industry certs and getting people what they need. Um, curriculum improvements is why we have more kids being able to pass these college readiness exams and colleges want those again. During COVID, colleges said, no, we're not going to worry about SAT or T S, we're not going to worry about those college entrance, that's not true anymore. They're right back to SAT and A C T, especially, I learned with my own kid, in scholarship money. So we're, we're still focusing on that for our students. Um, special ed is focusing on maximizing outcomes, we do the lever meetings to make sure that our kids don't disappear on us. And attendance work has kept them in the classes and earning those things. I feel like you kind of asked your questions along the way.
Uh, yes, Mr. Ochoa. Anyway, Mr. Ochoa.
Uh, can you go back to that first, uh, one of the first ones on uh graduation rates? Just had a comment. Since twenty eighteen, I think you said.
Yes, the class of twenty eighteen to the class I'm examining now is the class of twenty twenty three, so that was a five year trend. And COVID drops right in the middle of it, but it gives us enough perspective of before and after, so.
Yeah, so this is, I mean, I mean, this is everything for me, right? I mean, the state from now until forever, they're going to continue to change up star tests and accountability ratings. I used to teach income taxes and we have kids building rockets, we have kids working on cars, we have kids. Well, with the guy that, one of the kids that built my dad's shop on his property, learned how to weld at Guam. It's really difficult for anyone outside Waco I S D to really know what type of opportunities we provide.
Mm hmm.
For our kids, so really, all a kid has to do is show up and they're going to get a good education, a great education. And for me, this is, this is it, I mean, that's the number I want to see is that graduation rates are going up in our district.
And accompanied with that, sixty one percent of those graduates go out certified in some way or ready to go into college by scores. Or if they're a more artistic student, they'd able to be get an AP score on an AP art. We get a lot of AP art, you know, threes, fours and fives, that's considered CCMR and that's a non traditional kind of way for a student to get it. So our opportunities are huge.
I mean, I wish there was a way we could box that up and show everyone, like I can't tell you how many AP classes my kids are in. I can't tell you how many kids graduate with an associate's degree before they graduate high school.
Make them go look at the course catalog.
I mean, we learned tonight that we have what, top one percent for uh fi- fine arts?
One point three.
One point in the state of Texas, I mean, that's just not, people don't get that message.
I tried to get, we, we now have that front facing um course catalog and it's on a ton of pages for parents and students to choose and they're starting to go look. And I intentionally wrote that at uh like a fourth to fifth grade reading levels because it's for the kids, right? It's really for the kids to figure out, hey, I think I want to do this and they can click and see the classes. And the kids even told me, why should I care about audio visual, right? So they made me put in pages, so the eighth graders gave me feedback on the catalog and how they felt about it. So we've actually though had parents who have said, I went and looked at the catalog and this looks like a really cool class. So I would really encourage, if you're sharing with parents, go show them that catalog, the um amount of fine arts classes we have. And they're all detailed and described and the opportunities that exist with all of that is now out there for everybody to see.
Yeah.
I I appreciate your comment though because you um, you hit on something really important, right? There, there, there's a lot of data, there's a lot of accountability, there's complicated methodology for that accountability. Just like Denise said, you know, the the CCMR rates would have been an A for us, they're not going to be. Because the state changed the rules on us last year, but if you pull out from all of that convoluted stuff. And you look at this kind of data, it, we're, we're doing well.
Yeah.
And we're getting, and we're getting better.
On a micro level, you could pick any part of the district that you don't like or that you don't agree with and and say the whole district's bad. But when you see this, the the end, the end result, you know, it's, I know you're just the messenger, but hats off to every single person. That has a hand in in providing an education for our kids.
And even the CTE department has been pivoting when they see like Guam opened up um the drones this year. They did an academy for students to become drone pilots because there was less interest in one thing and more interested in this. And then we have the Heroes Academy, so a lot of students were interested in that, I was very excited when they were like, the kid chose to do like E M T, going out E M T certified. So that was exciting to me because it's expanding the things that kids can, the opportunities they can have. Doesn't mean you can't go to college, but you come out with a, with a job, with the opportunity for a job that earns more for the family and the student. So I think it's, all the things we offer are fantastic and I would encourage any parent or student, it's on the curriculum page, it's on the counseling page, on the special, it's the course catalog. Go look and it explains all you need to know about high school, but it describes all of our classes and programs.
Uh, just tying in with what uh Mr. Ochoa said, I think it's also really exciting. What you shared earlier uh about our four year graduation rates. And that we had a fifteen, almost sixteen percent increase in homeless kids graduating. These are kids that are already struggling for whatever reason and they're making it to school and they're graduating. And our special ed, eleven point seven percent increase over the last year, the previous year. We're holding high expectations and our teachers and our support faculty. And the, and the structures that this administration in this district has put in place. We're seeing these incredible growths and I really want this to go out. Uh, I'm looking at this, um, eleven percent, twelve percent increase in special ed graduations uh rates. Homeless graduating, that's incredible.
And it's more incredible when you realize that I believe um, our homeless rate on the last taper was four point three percent of our students and the state is only one point three. So we're already, you know, have a student population that's high needs, so for them to increase that much is impressive. It, because we're not losing them, we're keeping them and we're getting them not just in and staying, but keeping them and graduating them.
And making them successful.
And making them successful.
And give them a good boot up for when they get out and get a job.
Yes, which can only benefit the city of Waco, the stronger our kids, that, yes. That's why sometimes we'll make those decisions, you may not have the classes, but you're really talented at auto mechanics, we're going to let you go get certified in that. So sometimes we make those calls, I think I just put it in there to understand, we may have CCMR ramifications from that, but I'm okay with that. Because it's, it's not a lot of kids, but we have to give kids the chance to be teenagers. And if if the, what they're doing is exploring CTE, I think that's fantastic. Generational.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, for that presentation, appreciate it. Um, last but certainly not least, consider discussing, take appropriate action regarding hazardousness. Dr. Edison, thank you so much, and I just wanted to thank you ladies and gentlemen for just being here uh and and waiting patiently during this time.
We're going to try to.
Dr. Edison, would you mind to introduce them to?
Absolutely, I would love to.
Sure we know.
So you all met Ms. Brock before, Monique Brock, our assistant director of transportation, I don't know what we would do without her. She uh has been amazing with this transition and helped me out thoroughly. Uh, we have Ms. Pat Williamson, uh, who is one of our operations managers. Uh, Pat has been working for transportation uh in Waco for thirty years, twenty, twenty some years, it's, yes. So she is coming over to Waco I S D now with us as operation manager. And uh, we have Mr. Matt Vera, he is coming to us uh from Kingsville, Texas. Who had some experience uh with transportation down there and uh is moving to Waco with his family. And uh going to be uh one of our operations managers as well, so we appreciate him. And I can't see her, but uh Angie Johnson, Ms. Johnson is one of our loyal drivers that has been with the district uh for years as well. So yes, uh appreciate giving the opportunity to acknowledge you um for being here tonight as well. Uh, we are a team and tonight certainly shows that and shows their support for being here with us. Uh, as we go over our hazardous routes. And I want to take one more break too, before we get to hazardous routes, just to give you a real brief update uh as well with transportation. Uh, so earlier this year, you as a board approved our new camera system. And I want to let you know that that is being installed next week. And so uh it's going to take a few days to get that done, but we'll have that all installed. And you also approved as well a new GPS system for our buses and uh that's getting installed the week of August seventh. And so we'll have that as well to start the new year uh with that. And those are uh very important uh projects to our success, it's going to take a little bit to get used to it and get familiar with it and uh work those out. But um, those are things that are absolutely going to help us as well with our transition. Uh, as far as hiring and drivers goes, uh we set a goal of hiring forty drivers. Uh, we are almost there, we are one or two drivers short of that goal. And these are drivers with actual C D L certifications that will have the ability to start driving with us, uh, us. Um, again, commend, uh, commend our team there.
We were worried.
Transition over and recruiting uh about ten new drivers uh as well here. Again, with their C D L certifications and uh getting that endorsement to be able to drive before the the new year. And so uh we have some that are going to be in training as well, we're going to keep that going throughout the year, uh that process. Uh, so we'll have a pool of people as well, but we are very pleased uh with what we are doing in that area as well. Okay, um, so let's get back to hazardous routes and I do want to acknowledge one more person who could not be here tonight. Uh, that is Mr. Travis Cheatham, he is our new routing supervisor. And uh, he did a bulk of the work here with hazardous routes and uh really taken a deep dive into that. So I I commend him as well uh with the work he has done in regards to this. Little background information here and in full transparency, uh, you know, the board approves uh the list of the hazardous routes each year. And uh, as I said, transparency, that that list hasn't changed too much uh over the years. And so we really wanted to get really invested in this uh as we transition over. Because this is going to dictate uh some of our routes and where it goes and everything else. And so really clean this up, really take a good look at it and um do what we needed to do to make the necessary changes. And a lot of times keep things the same as well and sometimes to even reflect what was already being done uh on actual routes. And so let's get into this, just a quick definition, so we're all on the same page of what a hazardous traffic condition is. That's an area within two miles of a campus where no walkway is provided, children must walk along or cross a freeway, expressway, underpass, overpass or a bridge. An uncontrolled major traffic artery, industrial, commercial area or another comparable condition. So with that definition, uh, we as a district have a lot of flexibility to determine what that street, again freeway, expressway. Uh, I'll refer to it just a lot as a street, uh, is if that is hazardous, is that is dangerous for a student uh to cross on their way to school. We talked a little bit at the presentation in March about the hazardous zone funding. Uh, Texas Educational Code allows the school district to apply for up to ten percent of its regular transportation allotment and additional funding. Transport children who live within two miles of their campus but are subjected uh to hazardous traffic conditions or a high risk or violence when walking to and from school. risk or violence when walking to and from school. So I'm going to take you through each campus here and I'm going to go in-depth on a couple of campuses because they kind of represent all and there's going to be heavy emphasis on elementary schools because once you get the elementary set, secondary kind of fall into place after that based on a broader range there. So let's just take a look at Alta Vista here, that'll provide us a really good example of what we'll see in the future here. You see kind of a four-sided box here of where some perimeters are. Everything within that shaded area is considered a walkway. Everything outside of that shaded area still in the Alta Vista boundary would be considered a hazardous routes. So you can see in the north blocked off by Primrose, in the south blocked off by New Road, in the east Robinson Road, and in the west I-35. So to give you a great example kind of there, if you look at the west side, that big expressway, it's I-35, in those little green areas where there's apartment houses and complexes, those are zoned to Alta Vista. But we're going to have bus and we're going to have bus routes over to those areas even though it's well within the two-mile radius because that is a hazardous route crossing I-35. We don't want any kid to do that or anything else. And so again, if you took the actual distance, probably less than a mile, but we are providing buses to go through that, bring them to Alta Vista. Again, just a little small example of what's going to be reflected kind of throughout this. Alta Vista was one where no changes were made, it stayed the exact as it has been previous years. Bells Hill, one change being made, instead of kind of four-sided it, we made a little fifth side there, adding their Soca Road, now it's kind of a dangerous area there by 18th and 35 there, but you can see again, a pretty clear box there of what a walking area is. I want to stop right here and explain too as well, Bells Hill gives us another great example of some of the questions we had and some of the directions we're going. I think if you look there at the north, you'll see 17th and 18th Street. I think everybody can pretty much identify what 17th and 18th Street is, we've been down there before. We as a district, we could have chosen not to make 17th or 18th Street a hazardous route. Okay, that was well within our jurisdiction. There are places to cross on Dutton and Clay to where, you know, there are pedestrian walkways, pedestrian walking signs and everything else to do that. However, we chose not to do that. We did not, right thing, it's not the right thing to do. We do not want students still crossing 17th and 18th Street. We think that is still a little dangerous. However, what we're going to do, again, if you look to the north there, 17th and 18th Street, you see a lot of housing there. What we had been doing in the past is that area there, we were making about five stops all in that area, which as far as buses are concerned, is just not efficient. Okay, so one of the things we're going to do to help with efficiency and help with routes is we're only going to make about two stops in that area. So you have a situation where kids are not having to walk to school, they're not having to walk all the way to Bells Hill nor cross 17th, 18th Street. However, on that side of 17th, 18th, they may have to walk a little further to the stop, but that'll help us with our routes, with our timing, with our efficiency as we move forward with that. And so we believe it, it still benefits the student by making this a hazardous route, but limiting some of the stops there. Brook Avenue, Brook Avenue one, you, you can see to the east there, we are adding call cord between 9th and 8th for the Villages Apartments. Now, this has been left off in previous hazardous routes, but in reality, we have always been going to Villages Apartment. So this is a situation where we are adding, but nothing is changing because that's actually what we've been doing in the past there for Brook. So essentially add, but no change in reality to what's happening with Brook. Cedar Ridge is the one school where we are going to extend the walkway a little bit more, all that area will be walkway. You see to the north there, adding the 19th at Park Lake and Proctor, there are some really good crosswalks, 19th Street at Meridian Powell and College Drive that we feel students can walk. There was a couple of stops there that we are going to take away. We will communicate that clearly to the parents, to the school, and provide those safe walk spaces for any students that lived in those area. But this is one area to where we said that wasn't necessary, we're going to add a little bit more to their walkway and students are going to have to walk, again, well under two miles to the school. Crestview, no changes there as well. Crestview is one like Bells Hill to where, as you see, places in the north, northeast there, we're going to keep those. We may limit some stops again because we were stopping quite a bit in those, but we may try to limit some of the stops as we go through there and establish the routes there, but nothing changes at Crestview. Dean Island, very similar, same thing. Again, complete walkway there, anything outside of those streets, we are taking buses. And again, may limit some stops there as well. JH Hines, let's talk about JH Hines a little bit here. You see the bottom, we've added Faulkner Lane by Martin Luther King, which again, we've always had, just was excluded from the previous list, but we were picking up there anyway. But JH Hines gives us another example there that if you look to the west there, you have Waco Drive, that full line is Waco Drive. Again, could have made the decision and said, Waco Drive is not a hazardous route, that there are walkways, see the feeling already, and everything else. But based on that, you know, we are not doing that, we are keeping Waco Drive a hazardous route there, even though JH Hines is very close. I mean, we are making stops on the other side of JH Hines within a half mile of the school, but as we say, Waco Drive is a hazardous route. So they need that over there in order to do it. So that was one, again, that there's a big line, that's where bulk of the stops are on that other side of Waco Drive, but we are going to continue that with the bus stops. And again, only thing, may cut down on a couple of stops and walk a little further, but not crossing Waco Drive to get to JH Hines. Kendrick, not applicable because everybody there is outside of two miles, so we will provide everybody access to Kendrick once again this year. Mountain View, there is a add again on the north side, wasn't previously there, reflective in what we're doing. And then Lake Shore Drive and Valley Mills, I think it was just always kind of assumed, but never actually really listed there. So we are including that in there this time as well, so no real changes to Mountain View of what's actually happening. Parkdale, another add there of Lake, Lake Air Drive there on the kind of east side there with that. And so that will now cut off, you'll just see where the green is, be the walkway, anything outside of that will be considered a hazardous and pickup there as well. Providence Heights was interesting one, it was not listed on the hazardous routes last year or before, but it is necessary in order to do that. And there was a bus going to Providence Heights and so we are adding the northwest and southeast there of Tri's 21st and 30th, Waco Drive, once again, you see Waco Drive in between 18th and 20th Street as well. So these are some things again that we just caught, has taken a deep dive in there as to what actually needs to be in this document and is happening. South Waco, we are basically revising, nothing is really changing there, but revising how it's listed in order to more accurately describe what is actually taking place there in that essentially rectangle of a walking area in South Waco. South Waco also, know there were some concerns about a apartment complex that was nearby there. I've spoken with the principal and she is going to make a plan to provide more supervision to that complex to make sure students do get their homes safely. But there is a crossing guard there and there will be more supervision there for those kids traveling to that nearby apartment complex at South Waco.
Dr. Edison, Mr. Gillery, do you?
Is there a sidewalk on Gurley Lane?
Yes.
When y'all wrote, and that leads from the school down to that apartment complex?
Yes, sir.
There a sidewalk down there? I don't remember.
Yes, yes, there, there's actually on both sides. So you know, the right side by the clinic and library to that, there's a sidewalk there. Left side to South Terrace, there are sidewalks here.
Okay, okay.
Which apartment complex are you referring to on Gurley?
So the, the one that I'm referring to is as soon as you come out of South Waco, you take a right and then the left. Well, at one time it was called Arlington Farms, I'm not sure if it's changed. Not, that's the one I'm referring to on that with the principal. West Avenue is one that, again, nothing's going to change. That area there, you see, you can go through the streets and then west side of the boundary actually ends. Now we're going to get to the secondary schools and as is kind of stated, these are going to kind of fall right in line with that, so not going to spend too much time on that. Some of these are just cleaning up some wording on what is actually happening there. Caesar Chavez there as well fits some of the things with Bells Hill and making sure it's a clean document as well. GW Carver, nothing's changed, going to remain the same all the way throughout, so no changes at all there. Tennyson, as you see, you remember that picture that reflects Parkdale, so same thing that happened on Parkdale is going to reflect here as Tennyson as well in being almost right next to each other. Waco High was a interesting one and so the hazards are a little different than they were previously listed, but as far as the way the routes actually ran, this is a better description of what is happening and what is a safe walk space to Waco High and what we're actually picking up on the routes outside of that as well. So essentially no changes at Waco High either. University High School, just Primrose was excluded from that previous list. Again, you see kind of the figure there of what the appropriate walkway is and no changes to that as well. So basically that is it. Once again, I do want to commend Mr. Cheatham, I know he put a lot of hard work, he made the graphs for these pictures as well with this and has done an extensive job in really going through, looking at map, driving to locations and everything else to make sure we have a really good document when it comes to hazardous routes.
Mr. President, I'm moved that we approved the resolution regarding the hazardous traffic conditions as presented.
We've got a first, I didn't even have to ask for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Gillery, we've got a second, my Mr. Grant. Okay, any further discussion, Mr. Grant? Any further discussion?
I wanted to ask a question on the safety piece, like not just like the road safety, but I guess on the first route, it says something about just like a safe environment. Did you guys collaborate with Waco ISD PD to talk about like the actual neighborhoods?
Right, we, we talked about that and, and the way, the way it was described to me, that the original intent of that was a violent area and, and there's nothing in Waco that is actually listed as a violent area. So none of these are, are on the hazardous routes because of what would be considered a violent area. He just, Police Officer, Officer Freeman described it to me as something that would occur in a major city where there would be gun violence on a regular basis, that you could consider those things a hazardous, but there's nothing in here that's based on a violent area. So yes, sir, that, that is part of that definition, yes, sir.
All righty.
But you could if you.
You could, you could, it's told up to the district, yes, there's a broad definition of that.
If you felt unsafe, you could, you could name it a hazardous route.
Absolutely, yes.
I just know we, we have like two gang officers now and things like that, so I would think it might be some hazardous areas that we wanted to look at, but if you guys reviewed it, we can go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Vedania?
Yeah, and we, we looked at that as well, that the, one of the biggest reasoning was the fact that 18th Street ended there, you know, on, so unless you're going to the library, unless you're going to the clinic, there wasn't that, but we could look further at possibly putting a crossing guard down there on 18th Street with that. But yeah, a great question and, and give you our reasoning behind it, why we didn't consider that as opposed to other 17th and 18th Street was just that it did end it right there, you know? Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any further discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will, we can take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Dr. What? Yes, Mr. Grant seconded, yes, thank you for checking on that. Dr. Edison, thank you so much, thank you so much to the team. I know that this is a big wiggly mess of lots of moving parts, so I'm so thankful for that. I would, I would also kind of echo some of Mr. Davis's, just keeping an eye on kind of little hotspots where our students might, I don't want to say feel threatened, but where there might be kind of increased threats, we might not have them now, but just, you know, just keeping in dialogue with our police force and being able to really make sure that we have safe, safe routes for our kids. But then, and, and I appreciate you working and keeping an eye on kind of these, some of, some of these spots. I would also, I would love if Waco ISD can continue to partner with the city and get kind of these safe routes to school sidewalks, that some grant money that we can apply for and just kind of keep that in your purview of, of, of things and ways that we can actually kind of help our students have these safe spaces to be able to walk to school, so. But thank you, thank you all for staying to the very, the very end, we appreciate it and we appreciate.
And I would just say, I'll say one more thing here, this can be an ongoing document. So as we dive into this and we experience this, if things do open up, we can come back and add this in the middle of the year, if something that was missed or something that pops up, it can be an ongoing document, so.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Edison.
Do you mind if I say thank you to Dr. Edison and the entire team, along with our Human Resources Department for the heavy lift and, and taking on this, this summer and, or actually, we've been working on it since October, but, since last October, but this has been, they've, they've put in a lot of hours to, to pull this together for this fall, so it's going to be a big change and we're excited about it. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item number 13 announcements. Ms. Cox?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kinncanon, trustees. Student registration continues for the 2024-2025 school year. I want to extend additional accolades to the campus staff and admin teams for how they've supported families this week. You may have seen a push for in-person registration opportunities. The community input sessions gave me an opportunity to be on some campuses during the day this week and it was great to see all the ways that our staff, campus staff were setting up stations and available to help families get through that slightly tricky online registration process. So please encourage families that you know to, to still reach out to those campuses. Staff's coming back, we're getting ready, even though, though you don't see the big online push, we're here to help get kids registered ahead of that first day of school. New teacher launch or orientation is just around the corner on July 30th and 31st. One thing I want to note for you all and to help also spread the word is the Waco ISD Health and Wellness Fair that has been traditionally a part of that new teacher launch, is you're going to see a bigger push that that, we're opening that up to all district employees. That's on July 30th from 11:30 to 11:00. That's on July thirtieth from eleven-thirty to three PM at the base. Really want all, any Waco ISD staff to be able to come by and speak with vendors and get those different sorts of resources and connections to health and wellness. Kudos to our HR team for planning that. All teachers return to us on August one, so it, it's coming fast. Shifting gears a little bit, the communications team is hard at work on preparing a unique celebration that's going to start this school year. You have in front of you an invitation that has been sent by email to the diverse group of stakeholders that came together in January to help talk to us about what the Waco ISD story means to them. So on July thirty-first at five-thirty PM, we'll be in this room hosting a grand, grand reveal, is the adjectives Wendy has added, here in the boardroom. Again, that invitation is printed for you. It's going to be a fairly quick, exciting reveal for you, so we hope you'll be able to join us. And again, those that participated in the branding workshops have been invited along with campus and district department administrators.
Is that the recorded objects?
I don't know that we will have recording going on in the room at the time, but there will be the recorded components we will make sure you receive. Yes, sir. So Family Fest, Dr. Kinncanon hit on, is Saturday, August third. That will be followed up by Meet the Teacher Nights. Elementary is August eighth and secondary schools will have Meet the Teacher Nights on August twelfth. The first day of school is Wednesday, August fourteenth. Ready or not, here they come. So, shifting gears again, there's a lot on the list tonight. Board meetings, friends. We have a special board meeting for the proposed budget and tax rate, right Cheryl? We do. August eighth. Followed the next week with a special meeting on August fifteenth related to the superintendent search. Our regular meeting for the, for August will be the next week, August twenty-second. We'll see you all back here, look forward to that. One other quick note, the superintendent search committee, search community input sessions went well this week. The online survey remains open until July thirtieth. Folks can find it on our website at www.wacoisd.org/supsearch, S-U-P-T-S-E-A-R-C-H. So share, share the word. The survey's out there. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Hashtag supsearch, go and let your opinion be known. Okay, well, thank you so much for being here and we are adjourned at eight fifty-four.